Okay. If I can go ahead and have everybody come to the front and so I can start the meeting, please?
You hit the button. It's live now. It's live now.
That's okay. If I can have everybody take their seats and stop talking, please, so we can call the meeting to order. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6:03. This is a special meeting for Tuesday, August 8th, 2023. And Madam Clerk, will you take the roll?
I will. Madam Mayor, Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee.
Here.
Robert Yunt.
Here.
Mokie To.
Here.
Dmitry Fonoff.
Over here.
Ron Bernier.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing and hearing none, and the agenda is approved as presented. If you'll all stand and Beute Community Council member, President Ron Johnson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is audience participation. Anyone who is welcome to address the Assembly on any topic. It doesn't have to be just the topic for this evening that's on the agenda. And if you've just come up, I guess we don't have a sign in sheet, ma'am. Okay. So if you just want to come up and turn the mic on and state your name and tell us what you would like us to know.
Hello, my name is Patty Fisher. I am with Meadow Lakes Community Council. But I just want to say briefly before we get into the weeds and all of this, that I very, very much appreciate the Council, the Assembly, having the councils here and listening to us. I think it should have been happening a long time ago. There are lots of areas in the borough where there's no cities and community councils are the only voice that the people have. So we try to do our best, but it's great that we have this communication with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Assembly? Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the audience participation. The next item on our agenda is the community cleanup discussion. And this is, of course, with the community councils. We appreciate all of you not only giving us your time this evening, but also giving the time that you do year after year, serving on the community councils. And we thank you all for your presence. And with that, I will turn it over to Mike Brown, the Borough Manager. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I guess it's my job to prime the pump, if you will, and get things going. I thought we would start. Obviously, you know who we are because we have name tags and stuff. So I was hoping we could, and we could start over there with Ron. There's microphones around that you can kind of share. The ones on the end there, you can pull them in. The idea is so that as the community councils have input, you don't have to scurry back and forth to the podium or any of our guests from the state of Alaska. So if we could, just go around the room, that everybody gets a name that's sitting at one of the tables representing a community council. And then Mr. Ortiz and I will kind of get the conversation started. So if we could, Ron, start with you. Just introduce yourself and which community council you represent.
Okay, my name is Ron Johnson. I'm president of the Beute Community Council.
And I'm Fred Hirschman. I'm the coordinator for the community cleanups for Glacier View, former vice president of the community council.
I'm Sandra Tranny. I'm with Gateway Community Council.
And Patty Fisher, Meadow Lakes Community Council.
Bill Hastings, Tenney Community Council.
Good evening, Melissa Howard, Palmer District Attorney's Office.
I'm Annamika Powers, and I'm with the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation, the Solid Waste Division.
Hey, James Merrill here. I'm also with DEC Environmental Conservation, and I'm with Spar Pollution Response.
Todd Smolden, Office of the Governor.
Ryan Anderson. I'm a sergeant with the State Troopers based in Palmer.
Rodney McCain, Richwell, Erie Community.
Amber McDonough, Board Member of the Fisher Community Council.
Hi, I'm Brian Largent from Sutton's Community Council. We also have two other people here with me.
Great, thank you. So we'll get started. This is a new format for us. So we're gonna learn some things tonight about maybe how to do this differently or better as we move forward. But just to kind of recap and kind of talk about how we got here. I guess probably a year ago or so, the Assembly had started this conversation around this idea of community cleanup. There was interest in how do we help facilitate the cleanup of private property in addition to public lands and public right-of-way. So we started on that discussion more recently here in March during our strategic planning session. The Assembly really went deeper into that and talked about different incentives and programs that could be established that would help move this forward and address some of the problems that we know have existed out here in the valley for quite some time. So the borough started to create, really the Assembly began to create, a couple of programs that are relatively new. So there was, there is a flyer that we published to kind of talk about this, and we wanted to use it just to introduce the conversation. Tonight's meeting is really to be a discussion. There's nothing for decision tonight. It really is to solicit feedback, solicit ideas about things that we can do as a borough to help move forward on cleaning up junk vehicles, deal with derelict properties, address community cleanup issues. And we thought, if we're gonna have that conversation with somebody, the community councils is probably our best vehicle. I know, Will, you've been here before. You guys brought in a specific code compliance case. Jason Ortiz here in a minute will kind of talk about what we do from a code compliance perspective. He's got some code compliance officers that he will introduce, and we'll kind of share with you some updates on what that looks like currently. But really, all we're trying to do is get the ball rolling so that you all and the Assembly can provide input, ask questions, and we'll just kind of walk this thing out until we've decided it's good enough for tonight. And then we'll see where we land and what we do with that. So I did want to share a couple of quick updates of actions the Assembly's taken as of late. In May of 2023, the borough established a Borough Adopt a Road program. That's in addition to what the State Department of Transportation already does. And the idea is to create opportunities for volunteers who want to go out and clean up rights-of-way to make sure that we waive those fees and make sure that it's easy for them to do that and give them some credit for doing it by creating signage and giving them credit to the individual, to the family, to the company, whoever decides to take that on. So that's been communicated out. And again, that's something new that the Assembly established essentially by waiving the landfill fees associated with that so that folks can sign up and take that on. Obviously, that's something that community councils can help us to communicate and encourage folks to take that on. So that's now, we have that program between the state and the borough to cover the vast majority of our rights-of-way. The second program, and this one, I'm kind of providing an update to the Assembly because we've been working through this, this idea of a tow reimbursement. So Mr. Fonoff introduced an amendment during the most recent budget cycle to provide an appropriation for $50,000 to create a program. And I think it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, you can, if I don't get this exactly right with your intent, was to basically provide a reimbursement where the borough would pay the salvage yard to come and retrieve junk vehicles as a way to create an incentive to move that along. So we've been in the process over the past month or two, talking to the three salvage yards that we currently have out here in the borough. Admittedly, we haven't made a ton of progress. Right now, we have a salvage yard that is not within the compliance of its permit, so we're working on that right now. So we're kind of reluctant to sign a business agreement where we would be encouraging that individual to take on more vehicles when they're currently out of compliance. A second, a second individual who frankly isn't interested in the program at its current price point. And then the third one is a newly permitted operation that's not yet ready to go. So the good news is, we have a third salvage yard coming online that has a conditional use permit and is in the process of standing up operations. He's just not ready to do that right now. So I think we're gonna be in a good position here in the near future. We had hoped to roll the program out in July. What we initially went in with was a price point around $150 to $175 as a way to say, hey, we don't want residents having to deal with the administrative burden of it, and we need to make sure that it gets done properly. So the thought process was, as a borough, we'll sign an agreement with the three salvage yards. They'll go out and, you know, work with the homeowner that calls them, like we could communicate it out. And basically, we would reimburse the salvage yard for hauling that up to, I think it was two vehicles per homeowner. And we would basically reimburse the tow company or the salvage yard for that work. So then the resident doesn't have to be out of pocket anything. We can't exactly arrive at a price point with one of our salvage yard operators. I think they want that number to be a little bit different. So we kind of wanted to pitch that out there tonight. I think the original thought, as I mentioned, was around $150 to $175 a tow. And we were gonna establish a boundary for that where kind of, I won't say core area because it goes beyond what I would characterize as the core area. But when you get out to the farther reaches of the valley, say like Trapper Creek or Talkeetno, the Upper Shussetna, yeah, obviously, it's gonna cost a little bit more, but we would create an offset by paying up to a certain number. And then potentially, the homeowner would have to pay the delta to get that car, or that vehicle pulled into the core area to one of the salvage yards. So I would like to talk some more about that, to see if the Assembly wants to change that concept up a little bit. We could do kind of a voucher system where we provide up to a certain amount, and then we allow the homeowner and the salvage yard operator to figure out what that cost is for their individual vehicle. The reason it's relevant is, if you have a shell of a car, it doesn't have a lot of value. But if the car has parts that can be parted out, then the salvage operator gets value, right? So they have to determine what that value is, and we don't want to be in the middle of that anyway. So I kind of wanted to just bring that out, provide an update for the Assembly, and then we can talk a little bit about what you might think we should do differently. And then we'll take that direction and move on with that. Shifting gears, the private property cleanup, the Assembly did see fit in the budget to approve $100,000 for private property cleanup. So staff have created a criteria around that process whereby we can bring that forward, and Mr. Ortiz can speak to that in detail if there are specific questions about that. But we're trying to take that on as more of an administrative process because we see this being a recurring thing. In the past, when it first came up, we essentially would go to an Assembly member and say, hey, you sponsor a resolution to waive the fees, and then we'll bring it forward. But if, with an appropriation in the budget and an administrative process, that should make it a little bit more efficient. And Jason, like I said, can speak to that in detail. Now, recently, the attorney, last meeting, brought a junk and trash settlement forward to the Assembly, and the Assembly approved, putting the $188,000 from that settlement into the same account as the hundred. So we're just shy of $300,000 that can be leveraged for private property cleanup. So we're in the, in the makings of getting that rolling with that additional funding that's been made available for this fiscal year, which started July 1st. And then more recently, the Assembly's also approved, we have the annual landfill disposal coupon. We're still gonna bring that value up as it stands today. In the past, it's been $8. We had talked about bringing it up to 15, or I think it was, or cubic, or one cubic yard for the transfer sites. In addition, the Assembly waived landfill fees for residential customers from September 16th through September 30th of this year. So we have a flyer that will be, go out on social media next week that will communicate 30 days in advance of that upcoming waiver. So that's already been approved. The idea there is to incentivize folks to come in and dispose properly of their refuse for free, essentially. So we will get that communicated out next week, and staff are making preparations to receive that. We'll see how it goes. It could be, it could be an interesting two-week period. So we'll see how that goes. The other thing, and Jason may mention this later, that I thought was really proactive on his, from his perspective, was having code compliance officers reaching out to some of our junk and trash cases and really encouraging them to take advantage of that window to clean up their properties, you know, because they could do it essentially at no cost from a landfill fee perspective. And that may help us on some of our compliance efforts as well. So I've talked way longer than I wanted, excuse me, than I wanted to. I want to invite Jason up to introduce himself and his team and talk a little bit about some of the compliance efforts. He's gonna do that pretty quickly, and then we're gonna kind of be quiet and allow the conversation to start. But we figured there's some good backdrop that is really interesting in terms of how we manage our code compliance cases and efforts. And then we can answer any questions around the drug and criminal connection. That's why we've invited Sergeant Anderson here from the troopers. Code compliance matters. The attorney can address legal issues and injunctions and things. So just get to thinking about what questions or comments you want to make as soon as Jason does his rollout.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and to the Assembly, Madam Mayor, and our guests. This meeting is actually really exciting for myself, and I apologize, I'm gonna switch this way, so I'm talking to everyone here, so hopefully it's not offensive. This meeting right here is really, really exciting for us because code compliance, I mean, it is, my name, let me take that back, excuse me. I'm Jason Ortiz, Development Services Manager here at the Mountain, just to sit in the borough. One of the, a sliver of what I do is code compliance oversee code compliance officers. And do want to introduce them first. So we do have Kendra Johnson. She's our senior code compliance officer. We have Austin Flavin, a code compliance officer, and Nick Uppis. Mike Johnson is not present. He's on vacation. So we have four code compliance officers. This overarching, and a lot of people wondered why we brought the troopers and everyone here. A lot of what we deal with with code compliance has a lot of overlapping issues with criminality or other issues. And a lot of cases where we see code compliance, the troopers also have similar situations where they're being dispatched or called to. Many of you from the community council I've spoken with, I've presented and talked to you about different issues and how we deal with code compliance cases. Geographically, we're covering everywhere in the borough. So we have four officers. You can pretty much put that into a quadrant and realize we're covering one officer per each of those quadrants. So we're looking, right now, we settle at right around 800 cases that we're dealing with, active cases. And it's pretty much, pretty evenly divided between all the different areas and how that's represented. Our officers during the, I would say, from early spring until late fall, we do Saturday shifts, so we're out there on the weekends. So they are working on a split schedule, rotating schedule, where they're working out on Saturdays. One of the, I wanted to talk just about the way they, what they do when they're in the field with an app. We work on an iPad. So when they're actually out there in the field, they are documenting everything. One aspect that I see is every time, no matter what the situation, whether it's a junk and trash or any complaint that they're following up on, they are working based on an app. They're taking pictures, they're documenting, and they're documenting that for, at a later time, if it does have to go to court or be adjudicated through the court system. We do emphasize a lot on the importance of documentation in code compliance, so everything that they do. Recently, we've been starting to work with the Alaska State Troopers, so we're going to be setting up a quarterly meeting where we can start sharing information with code compliance is doing with the troopers, just to get a better eye on the ground and communicate more with those community councils as well. Overall, like community, the way that our approach for code compliance works, it is complaint-driven. So we are not driving around just looking for code compliance cases. We get plenty of calls that just call, come in, and then we are responding out and going out to their, we always take an education approach. So the first thing that code compliance officers are doing when they come out to a new complaint is they're talking to the complainant, explaining what the code violation is, and then giving them a time to comply with that code. Usually, it's just, it's just a reasonable timeframe. Nothing is set in stone. You know, if they look at someone and they have their means and they think that they can get it done within a couple of weeks, they're gonna follow up in a couple of weeks. They're gonna red dispatch, take pictures of the entire process, and make sure that there is actual progress being made. If there's not progress, then we kind of proceed forward with a little bit more tougher approach up until we're issuing tickets to a person. Tickets, the way that works is they can issue tickets. Those get adjudicated through the court system. And a person can either, you know, pay it and we receive the fine amount, or they can plead not guilty and go to trial and either be found guilty or not guilty. If they do not appear, those tickets get defaulted. If they don't pay their ticket, which is sometimes some of our more egregious junk and trash issues, they don't pay the ticket. Those just get a default at the court. The next step that we try to do to attempt to collect some money is something I implemented a couple of years ago was PFD garnishment. So we would, we will swipe the PFDs if and when they're available. We are pretty low on that totem pole. So like, the feds are gonna get their money, child support's gonna get their money, state's gonna get the money, all before us. But if there's no one in line, we're gonna, we're gonna get those, given that they have applied for a PFD and that they're eligible for a PFD. So we do try to use all mechanisms to get the money that we can when we can receive those things. I also wanted to talk about our Problem Reporter app. For those of you who are not familiar, the code compliance uses this, and we encourage it. I've talked about it when I go to do presentations at the community council. Problem Reporter app is something that anyone can download on your phone. And within a minute, you can submit a report. Problem Reporter accepts reports for abandoned vehicles, animal care, road maintenance, and trash in the right-of-way. So that's a very useful tool for you guys that are out in the community. And within a minute, on an app on your phone, you can, it'll link right to your phone, snap pictures, submit it. We take the information and dish it out and take it from there, and it saves you from having to call in. So wanted to just highlight that really quick. Talked about tickets in that process. So once we get to a code compliance case that's pretty egregious, and we've issued lots and lots and lots of tickets, and we've gone there, we've exerted a lot of time, we're working on, and everyone here has a situation like that in your area that you could talk about and specifically. But what we, what we do with those, after a certain amount of time, another tool in our tool bag, in our bag, is what's called an injunction, a civil injunction. And I'll probably let the attorney talk a little bit more about it, but essentially, an injunction is when our attorneys draft a complaint and file in a Superior Court asking for a judge to issue an order for a specific action. So if it's a junk and trash issue, then we're asking them to clean up this. Sometimes those are successful, and sometimes they're not. It is still a piece of paper that we're requesting a judge to compel someone to take an action. Mr. Attorney, did you want to add any more on that part before?
No, just keep going. I guess I can answer questions or talk more about it if, when we get there.
Okay, so, so what, the important part of what people understand about the injunction process is it doesn't necessarily fix a problem. It just is giving us a court order that tries to help take the next step in that problem. And sometimes it is the next step, and sometimes it's not. There's quite the process that internally that we do, and so many hundreds of hours that go into working these cases and documenting them. So that's what I was gonna touch on, on code compliance. Private property cleanup. So Mike and the Assembly and everyone, when we talked about this meeting, we tried to talk about how, how can we address some of these issues from a holistic approach? Like, we can talk about it and beat this till, till, till the topic is not, is not popular, but really, we are trying to address some of these bigger issues, and how do we do them? Really, we do need the community to come together to give us those ideas. The most important thing that we want to take away from today's meeting is to listen to what you guys have, ideas of how can we solve these junk and trash issues? How can we solve, how can we make our community a better place, and how can we make the Matsu a better place that we want, we all want to live and bring people in? And there are gonna be those certain pockets of cases that are near and dear to your hearts. We're not trying to get into specific cases, but we want to listen, like, what can we do? So when Mike spoke about some of the different things that we're doing, some of those, it's pretty exciting because the borough has never really stepped into the issue of private property cleanup. So it can be controversial, but all in all, what it's trying to do is tackle cleaning up some of those blights in the neighborhood. The private property cleanup, the way, the way we have drafted a pre-draft version of what we see this program working would be to work together with the community councils. And what that would look like is hypothetically, say, Ron, over in your community council, you want it to, you guys as a councils have a certain specific area or a property in your, in your neighborhood where you want to see it cleaned up. We would hope that your community council would get together and, and say, you know, we want to clean up this property. You would contact the property owner and try to see if they're willing, because obviously, a person has to be willing for you to go onto their private property. If they're willing, and this is something where we've kind of created these forms, and we've, we've created a model for this. And then with this pot of money that's set aside, that we just talked about, what's funded for fiscal year '24, your community council would be able to do a couple of different things. One, they can go out and just hire a contractor to do, to do that. They hire a contractor. As you can imagine, it's very expensive to do that type of contracting work. Hundred thousand, or I think it was a little bit more, you said, right? Manager Brown, $280, 300?
Yeah, the current funding available is $288. Obviously, we want to make the most, the best use of that, which means if we can stimulate some community involvement and volunteerism, we can make that go a lot farther.
Yeah, one of the ways that we talked about that, like, we were just kind of kicking around the idea and looking at what other municipalities and cities across the nation have done. Some, one thing that's, that's, that has been done, and it could be a popular idea, is to do a trash-for-cash type of program. And we talked about this, and what this could be is maybe, maybe the, maybe the community council reaches out to an approved list of nonprofits. And one of those nonprofits wants to tackle cleaning up that, that specific property, and then they could get paid for doing something like this. So it kind of helps community, helps nonprofits in the valley, but it also helps the original issue of getting the property cleaned up. So we were just kind of thinking of different ideas, you know? This is really where we would like to spur this conversation to see, like, how would you guys envision this cleanup program taking effect? Where would you like to see this go? How can the, how can the borough partner with the community to make this happen and leverage the most of this money? So I think it's probably about all I got on the private property. Did you want me to elaborate more, Mr. Manager?
Okay. Does the Assembly have any questions of either Jason? Yes, go ahead. Assemblyperson McKee?
So when you're going and taking pictures and such, do you, I'm assuming you don't go onto their property?
Are you, through the mayor to Assemblymember McKee, are you referring to like code compliance officers when they're taking, like, on cases?
And do they like to walk around the perimeter and take pictures, or can they get into people's property?
They generally are doing it from the, from their truck in just a safe spot, and it depends on what it is. Like, some junk and trash things, violations, the way the code is written, it's actually what you see from the street, and it's not gonna be from side angles and things like that. So oftentimes, we will get a complaint for a junk and trash issue, and someone's in the far back corner of their property, and they send us a picture, look at all this trash. And then when we go out, we can only enforce based upon what we see from the road. And so then we do have to explain to the person or the complainant, this is, it does look bad from your angle, however, it doesn't violate borough code. So yes, we do document, even in a case where we receive a complaint like that, we would document it and then close out the case because we would determine that is something that's not in against borough code.
Thanks. Assemblyperson Nowers?
Just trying to get a sense of the scope of the problem and the different types of property owners you're dealing with, so the different routes you might go. So did you say there's 800 active, are those junk and trash cases, or are those all code compliance?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Nowers, it is not exactly that many junk and trash. That's how many active code compliance cases we have. A large majority, uh, the majority is going to be junk and trash though. So it could be a variety of different cases.
Okay. And just, you know, trying to figure out how to clean up these places. I've seen places where you just have an unwilling property owner and they're just junk and they don't have any, you can't get blood from the turnip. There's no money to be gotten. And you know, they just don't want to participate. And so you'd have different strategies for that property owner versus the willing property owner that somebody would let come on their property. So like cases you have like are, there's kind of twofold to this. Are the most, you have the most egregious ones, the communities would really like to be seen cleaned up. How, what percentage of those do you think are the unwilling property owner that you, you really can't get to comply? And then just kind of overall, how many of the, all the cases, the egregious and the less egregious, do you think you have the, the unwilling property owner that it's, is tough to get to comply, even if you garnish their PFD?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Nowers. So the one thing I'll say is like of, of the eight hundred or approximately eight hundred cases, like, and how I said that this is a sliver of my job. I, I probably can speak to almost every one of those cases. Like that's how much involvement I have on all these different cases. But to answer your question specifically, like, I would say similar to like what you see in the, in the criminal justice system of like the majority of cases. You have a tiered layer of tiered, tiered level. It's like a cake. And that very top is those, what you see, the egregious. If I had to put that into a number, you're probably talking just maybe fifteen, you know, fifteen really egregious cases that you see. But the overarching is still a large complaint, you know, and, and we still get a lot of, a lot, it generates a lot of calls where people complain about, about junk and trash in their neighborhood. But the really, really egregious ones, those are the ones that, that you talked about that are really difficult. And we've, we've continued to, to issue citations and we do not see much traction or, or action happening.
Okay. I'm just looking forward to the discussion of how we prioritize those and, and what we do about those. So I just, I'm thinking that, those thoughts in my head. And I'm also interested in how the discussion goes, how we might address those.
Yeah. And, and even like on some other issues, on other perspectives, just to give you an idea of like myself, manager Brown, Director Strawn, co-compliance officers, we are constantly trying to think of different, unique ways that we can address some of these issues. I mean, just on another note, you know, we have a few cases where their people have a conservator guardianship over them. So these people obviously don't have everything going where they can make all the decisions on their own. It's really unfortunate, but when we get a complaint about that or a continued complaint, our co-compliance officers are going to work together and try, we try to resolve the issue. We've even reached out to state agencies to try to see like, what, what can we do to change, to change this here to better our resources and time? Because it doesn't benefit the borough to continue to write citations. Our goal is not to, to monetize and collect money. Our goal is to see the community cleaned up and be a better area for everyone to live. So we are consistently working outside the box and like, what can we do? I mean, when I think about issues, I, I do not just think like, what do I have here? I mean, I'm like, can we reach out to the state? Can we do this? What can we do? And, you know, leveraging those different resources. So I think we should open this up and I can have a seat and love to hear.
Just a minute. I have a couple of assembly people that would like to ask questions first, please, sir. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
There's no rush. We can do whatever. But I, I guess what I wanted to get out there is, um, one of the egregious situations was in my district and it was pretty overwhelming for me when I got elected and then got educated on the situation from my community council and one of the members that lived in our, in the, in the district or whatever, in the subdivision, I should say. But originally when I proposed having this meeting, it was really with the intent and I'll, I'll look to Nick and that, I hope that we can come out of tonight with some sort of like formal, not maybe step by step. Every situation's not the same, but it took me a long time, I felt like, to solve that problem because, you know, Jason was a huge help, but I just really didn't know what to do. I ended up getting lucky on the one in my district. They were behind on property taxes. There was, it was more than just drunken trash. There was a lot of drug dealing going there, a lot of theft. The troopers got involved multiple times. And then finally we were just able to auction the property off. That was pretty lucky, right? I mean, but just to roadmap some training for assembly members so that when we leave, we know how to address this. And then so the community councils know as well what type it is. Is this, you know, i- if they're behind on taxes, we can go this route. If they're not behind on taxes, but there seems to be, I'm super excited that the troopers are here, but if there seems to be theft or drug dealing happening in these places, they're not all just drunken trash. Some of them have other really bad things happening there. So if we could kind of lay out a plan for each scenario, I guess, so that we're all on the same page and we do have a path forward. I feel like it'll speed the process up for us. So it, I'm super excited. This is a great turnout. This is, this is awesome. So I did want to focus on the legal side of it, how we can, you know, keep things going forward legally in a timely manner so that they don't get kicked from assembly member to assembly member. You know what I mean? So thank you.
Assemblyperson, I'm sorry, did you?
Sure. Go ahead, sir.
Through the mayor, it's Assemblymember Yount. So just so you know, like on every case, we do take a deep dive and, and we, like some of the first things we look at are, are, are they back on taxes? And then we have to evaluate, well, is the property worth twelve thousand and are they only paying a hundred dollars a month, a hundred dollars annually in taxes? So they're three years behind? Is it worth our time to beat that down to, at it from a tax perspective when we know that they're just going to pay three hundred dollars right away and come current and then that situation dissolves it? Whereas we have other properties that may be worth three hundred thousand dollars and they're, and they're like nine or twelve thousand dollars behind the taxes. And that's a less likely standard. So we know that that's an approach that we can take. So we do, we do analyze every property that's really egregious. We really fine tooth comb on how we can address those. But I wouldn't, I mean, as long as I through the, with the manager and, and our, my director's discretion, I would definitely, I'd be happy to lay out an approach for you that addresses the taxes, how they're behind. We've, we've, we've looked internally at our foreclosure process and how that works and what can we do? If borough attorney has weighed in on things that we can do to try to make that process a shorter timeframe. So that, because, because again, that criminality aspect, the junk and trash, the behind on taxes, there's a, there's a common theme between all of that going on. So we've really have analyzed that and the theft issues, you know? One of the things that I do, and you guys have probably heard this speech, but one of the first things I do when I talk to people in the public is I tell everyone, hold public officials accountable. Because if I, if I, I have a boss and if I tell you that I'm going to do something, I don't do it. I would expect that you're going to call my boss. And I tell you the same thing when you call the troopers, when you call anyone, make sure you guys are documenting of, of all these different occurrences so that you have a, a list that you can talk about on these issues. So whether it's community council or here, but I'd be happy to, to have something, you know, some sort of a matrix, I guess, for the assembly to be able to see, I can certainly figure something out for you guys. Hope that answered all your questions.
May I follow up real quick? So one other scenario too, it's not in my district, but I was recently contacted by somebody about a property that is substantially behind on taxes. There's been, they've been in violation of this for a long time. And, and I come here and I do some homework on it and I found out that maybe it's possible that the boroughs never pursued it because they're worried about contamination on the site. And so I, I understand that could be a really expensive problem for us to solve. If we end up taking this property back and we clean it up, I say we collectively, the borough, the taxpayers and everything, contamination could be expensive. That's terrible. But it's inevitably it has to happen eventually. So I think we should create a plan or a path forward for those situations as well for contamination. Thank you.
Assemblyperson two?
So last year, I think, Jason, when we were involved in the Big Lake cleanup up there, I think we moved over sixty cars and I think we cleaned up, I think it was about eight properties. What I find is a real shortage of volunteers. So I think if you're talking about a nonprofit paying them, would that be like an hourly wage to get rid of the stuff or would it be by the ton? Or I think it would be a good idea to have some kind of agency that we can call and say that we have authorization to clean this property up. And that's what they do is they come clean it up.
Go ahead, sir.
Through the mayor to Assemblymember two. So for those of you that don't know, Assemblymember two was, was really instrumental in helping with the community cleanup out in Big Lake and took a lot of his personal time to help clean up. And this specific thing, issue, it, it takes, it took a lot of man hours. We've got a lot, a lot of time in that. Figuring out a plan, I think would, could be good. I, I think piggybacking on what you said kind of comes back to the core of this meeting, like we really need the community to get involved. Like this is not just us trying to figure out this. We need the community to give us ideas and see how, how can we, how can we get the community out there? And I, I honestly believe from knowing nonprofit sector that there are lots of opportunities, but we need the nonprofits to show up. We need them. We need some people involved. It needs to spread and, and get, get, uh, get some excitement about getting our neighborhoods cleaned up. But I, I think there is a potential, but it, it kind of depends on what the appetite for nonprofits is. But I, I do think that we can certainly figure out a, a structure that goes into this though for you.
Okay. Assemblyperson McKee?
We've had a, a couple of folks come to the assembly meetings and address us a couple of times and gave us pictures. And it was abominable and horrible. And if I lived next to those folks, I'd be blowing stuff up, but that's probably not the proper avenue to take. Is this kind of thing, is this what we're talking about right now? Going to be, those folks are going to get handled through this, I hope?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, through the mayor to Assemblymember McKee. So what, we're trying to take, look at this holistically, like how do we address junk cars on property? Uh, how do we address cleaning up private properties? How, how do we address like all, all of these different issues? So yes, those could be one of the, some of the situations where we'd be doing some cleanup, but it really would take the private property owner to consent to that cleanup and, and a mechanism in there. So whether it's a community council coming to and saying, hey, let's, let's work together and all of us work together, the borough pays it and gets it cleaned up. It could be some of those neighborhoods that are, those situations that are real blights in the neighborhood.
And these folks didn't sound like they were, the, the guys weren't messing it up, didn't seem like they would be willing to do anything about it. So then what do you do?
So that kind of comes back to the same situation. We, we will have those situations where people don't want anyone stepping foot on their property. They don't want to consent to the borough to clean up. So we would continue down the path of issuing citations because they're violating the, the ordinance or the borough code. The next thing is if it doesn't come to that point and it, it could be that we recommend an injunction and that would be up to our attorney, whether or not that they want to take that on. But I, I preface that, that, that the injunction process doesn't mean that it's going to get the neighborhood cleaned up. Because, because they issue a piece of paper from a judge says, clean it up. It doesn't mean that person's going to go, oh, I better go clean that up. So it really, it really depends on the person. So we, it's really looking at it from lots of different angles. That's why this, it really is a complicated, complicated topic. And, and it takes a lot of people together. So I forget, how do, how do we clean these up? What do we do?
Mike, go ahead.
So if I may, through the mayor, you know, one of the things, Ms. McKee, when we look at this and, and we consider the use of, when I, when I got here, not even three years ago, we weren't doing private property cleanup. We were doing public property cleanup. We were cleaning up borough lands. We were cleaning up public rights away. The assembly then started venturing into this body. What do we do to kind of help with the private property cleanup? So what we're trying now is to come up with some different systems and mechanisms to kind of operationalize this. Because there is going to be a balance between how much taxpayer funds do we allocate to clean up somebody's personal property, right? So we're trying to find a system where you can stretch the dollars using community involvement, maybe it's nonprofits, volunteers, et cetera, so that we don't go out and just hire a contractor, pay a premium to go in there and then just clean up a property. Cause we could certainly do that. I just don't think we'll get a lot done and we'll probably spend a lot. So that's what we're working through now is trying to figure out what is that balance and how do we arrive at something that we feel like we're getting adequate benefit for the dollars that the assembly is appropriating to chase these problems down. And, and unfortunately, or I guess what I want to caution, I don't want to get the egregious cases like Ms. Nowers asked about, like you're always going to have a small percentage of egregious cases. I don't want to get completely focused on the egregious cases because there's a lot of stuff out there, you know, like the, the work Mr. Two did in Big Lake, those were good examples of non, I mean, they were pretty bad cases. Don't get me wrong. But there was an opportunity to go in there and make a difference. Like there are a lot of cases like that across the borough. So even though we may have those egregious cases that come up and they're, they're going to continue to be there, we'll keep working them. But there's a lot of gains that can be made in all of those other cases that aren't at the top of the cake. And, and I think that's what, what we're looking at. We'll continue to chase out legal, you know, the legal system in terms of injunctions and different things. And if we're, you know, like Mr. Yount mentioned, the tax foreclosure, maybe we're fortunate to, to be able to kind of dispose of a property that way. But we can't rely on that because there's not always a connection there. And I think Nick can speak to that in an inordinate amount of detail. But I think when, like when I hear Jason talk about, what's encouraging is we got to chase all of these cases. Doesn't matter where they are, how bad they are, how long they've been around. There is opportunity and what we're seeing this body do is take a position that's different than what we have been doing in the past.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I got this group of, of squatters that I've been chasing around for about the last five years. And we've had two really good success stories with them. We got them out of the Butte compound and then we got them out of the place that they were staying on our road. But in both of those cases, well, in one case you had an owner who really didn't, uh, really wasn't involved at all. And then in the second case, you had an owner who wanted to get the folks and the trash out of there. And now they're down at, at Justin, which, you know, you guys have been working really hard on. Kendra's been down there. I, you know, I don't even know how many times. But this is one of those cases where, you know, the owner is complicit in the thing. And, you know, and they're, they're behind on their taxes and they ignore the, uh, they ignore the tickets and you, you can't attach your dividend because nobody files for a dividend because they're all, you know, convicted felons or whatever. And what I would like to see eventually, and this doesn't have to, you know, I wouldn't, it's not something you could rush. But what I would like to see is like a policies and procedures manual between, you know, co-compliance and so everybody from co-compliance to the attorney, to land management, to the assembly members all know exactly like what kind of steps they can take to resolve these really bad ones. You know, keep working on the little ones to keep them from getting, you know, into the kind of condition that these really bad ones are in. But we need a process that everybody can go to the, to the book and see, you take this step, you take this step, you take this step. If everything works perfectly, obviously, you know, you're, you're always going to have hiccups. You're always going to have, you know, that step isn't applicable to this particular property or whatever. But to where we can, you know, get these places, you know, whether it's, whether it's injunction or it's a foreclosure in lieu of judgment or foreclosure for taxes or, you know, something that we can get these really bad, we can keep them moving. You know what I'm saying? If you, if you get them out of one place, they always go to the next place. But then you can, you can catch them while it's still small. And they don't, you know, have this giant buildup of, of, of garbage, you know? We, we, when they, when we first got them out of Butte compound, they scattered and there were half a dozen places. And, you know, co-compliance worked really hard, like there was, they were parked down by the river, you know, uh, near the revetment, uh, mile fifteen. And you guys got them out of there and I think you had to take like four hundred pounds of trash out of there. They weren't even there two weeks or something. You know what I'm saying? And so that, but that's a lot easier than shifting these, these, these places where it's just neck deep in cars for ten acres or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So anyway, that I would like to see eventually a, a, like a policies and procedures manual.
Okay. Um, I have a number of people on the assembly that want to speak, but I, I think we're here to hear from the community council. And so the only assembly person that hasn't spoken yet is Assemblyperson Farnoff. If he would like to say something, then I'd like to turn it over to the people that we want, ask, we, the invited guest, I guess, is what I should say. Okay. So Assemblyperson, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for coming. I specifically want to thank community council that's within my district. Will, Rachel, and your group who's been very active because I think a few months back, back when we had a very late nighter, you guys stayed here through the thing, put a lot of time, gave us material, gave us pictures. We actually had a really good conversation. I believe because of that, we have this meeting. I don't want to take that credit fully, give you guys fully. But I think you guys played a big part into making this happen. We have this meeting. I don't want to take that credit fully, give you guys fully, but I think you guys played a big part into making this happen and I want to. Sincerely thank you for that. Um, and I think it's good that we can. Kind of talk in general, but right now we have an awesome, perfect opportunity with the troopers here, State of Alaska and all the other departments here. And specifically maybe use a case study of a case that they specifically brought to our attention about the Heather Way and. Is there a way from while having all departments here together to say, and this is would probably consider according to Mr. Ortiz, one of the more severe cases. That has issued, um, from the safety, the drugs, the trash, the illegal activity. Property values nearby that are suffering a little bit and there's probably safety concerns, things that. So if, um. We're going to talk kind of in general, but I think this would be a, a good example that maybe when it gets to. Their turn that they can speak a little more and see how we as a body could do something and utilize the, um, efforts. Combined efforts to help a case like that. And if we do create like a manual that we could follow through, this would be a. A, a good example that we could turn to because each case is a little bit different, obviously, and we understand that. Not everybody will comply on everything. Not everybody will fit certain criteria, but I'm sure in generally there is a. Approach that we can take that will be beneficial. And as far as, um. Uh, efforts that Mr. Two put in the past and had a great success. One of the things he spoke about is the need of volunteers. I actually had a good conversation, um, on Sunday with the, um. Director for Adult and Teen Challenge where they are housing. Up to 25 people, adult people who are physically fit and able and capable of doing. And. When I spoke to him, he says. Give us opportunity to volunteer. We're here for you. These are guys are going through a program. They need it. And I'm saying. Contact, uh, talk, talk to me a little more. I have the contact information. If we can attack it and put these kind of, I mean, these, we're talking about physically fit guys that can. Capable of working and everything like who's been clean for a certain amount of time. And I think to utilize that kind of thing for benefit. For them and for us is a good thing. And I'm sure there's probably other organizations that are, be willing to, um, lend help. And I'm, as a contractor myself and other contractors, I think we could probably. Put some kind of effort in whether with, with equipment, waste management and things like that. So when we attack a project, we get it done. Make a, a good example of it and almost then, uh, put a list and go after the next one and, um. That's kind of my approach and I'm hoping to hear a little more what, um, what everybody else has to say.
Okay, so, yes, Jason, did you have further remarks?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just through, uh, through the mayor to the Assemblymember Fawnoff. So the one thing I think it's also really important for everyone to understand is like. Hypothetically say a, an injunction process starts, like your manual would. Your manual would potentially look like. All right, this process starts in about two or three years from now. This is where we'll, we'll start. Like those processes are so incredibly long and, and. And District Attorney sitting here next to me, like one thing that, that happens in the criminal justice system is. Criminal cases take the priority over civil cases. So a civil injunction case is a very, very, very low, even though we're seeking. Emergency injunctive relief through the courts, you might get an initial something, a bite. But all those hearings and all that process, that's lots of years. So it doesn't, it doesn't resolve an issue like make it happen fast. It's still a. I don't, we wouldn't want anyone to like leave here with a false sense of hope that that happens. And then action makes something happen really fast. It is a really long, drawn out process.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open it up to community council members that, uh, would like to come. You all have mics, so just be courteous to each other. And so if you see a mic on, wait until. That person's finished talking, please. And, and we'll just go. I don't have a. A sheet. So, okay. Your mic is on, go ahead, sir. You might just again say what area you are from since we've had some new people, uh. Come since we introduced ourselves.
Rodney McCambridge, Willow area community organization. Couple of comments first. It's always nice having money. We all want more money, but $300,000. I don't mean to be offensive how I say this, and we all know when you say that you're going to be offensive. But I don't mean to be. But $300,000 I could spend in Palmer and Wasilla by Thursday at five o'clock to clean up. So with the money, I would target it more towards the Parks Highway. Because when we look at things here. We want to bring tourists in. I would suggest we clean up parks this way when they're driving down the road and going through Willow. And Telkina and Trapper, you know, they're more willing to spend their money in a nice looking area than, you know, in a dump. The second one I, question I have. And something that we're going to have to look at. Is in my area where I live, I live on Willow Fish Hook Road. Gold Hadrepass. And we had a guy who started squatting on a property. And there are nine abandoned vehicles there. Various, none of them have wheels, various forms of, who have engines and there's two motor homes. The property they're parked on. The people do not live in the state of Oregon. They come here like once every two years. They rent a camper, put it on their property, stay for their three weeks and go back to Nevada. We contacted the owner to tell him what was going on. He made a complaint. The troopers did come out, roused the, the squatters out of there. The problem is he has seven cars sitting on his property that aren't his. He has no titles to. He has no form that they are his cars. He's called, uh, tow companies. They can't tow them because they have to send out flatbeds. There's no flatbeds. They don't have titles. They can't legally tow the car unless they get a piece of paper that says they can legally tow the car. And this guy lives, you know, on the lower 48. So we need a mechanism for that and to clean up those properties and help those peoples out. Cause he wants those cars gone. But he's got no way of getting them out of there. So that is, um, going to be a concern and some of the things. And one of the, uh, other suggestions I would make. Is that if the county was able to. Because you did say with towing the cars, you know, you're trying to pay 150, $175 to tow a car. There is no one coming out to Willow to tow a car in for 150 bucks. What I would suggest is that maybe we could hook up with the county, with the borough somehow. Get a borough vehicle and a flatbed and a forklift. And go out and go, we know these are done. We'll pick them up. We'll take them to the transfer site. So just a couple of suggestions. I know I spoke too much. Thank you.
And Nick, you look like maybe you wanted to, no, you don't. Okay.
I, I saw that too. I thought he.
I, I thought he too was.
Just some good ideas. I mean, there, there's, there's no particular, I mean, if we're talking about ideas here, brainstorming. There's no particular reason you can't start to treat abandoned cars on private property. As we treat the abandoned cars that are in the right of way. You just have to go through a notice requirement, publication. I mean, when we find abandoned vehicles on our rights of way. It's probably not something we've ever dealt with before. It's certainly nothing I've ever heard before, but there are mechanisms to start to get there. So this, it's good. Like I was just thinking how Jason was saying, it's good to hear that because there, there are solutions out there that we could do that we haven't thought of, which is why we're bringing you guys in.
And especially apparently if the owner of the land, the property is interested. Um, Mike, did you have a comment too?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'll, I'll let the, so if you pitch an idea, like I, I want to have a conversation with him about that, but I don't want to take up the time tonight. I'd rather hear the idea. So got it. We'll do some follow up because I'm kind of interested in like, well, who does the tagging? What about the owner and in Nevada? But we can work through that, but let's not, I don't want to get too wrapped around that because then we're not going to hear everything out. So. Acknowledged, we'll look at that.
Okay, do I see another light on? I don't see the light on.
You can get it on. I'll get it on right now. Richard Heller, Secretary of the Butte Community Council. So you get, we getting for the cart here, the horse, for the horse, how they say, whatever it is. I've talked with Ms. Carey at DUC. The salvage yard in the state of Alaska is a big issue overall. There needs to be legislation. Where did your 60 cars go to? Mr. Two. Where did your 60 cars, where, where they taken to?
The Butte.
Correct. You're trying to incentivize people to come out there. I don't know if you've seen it or not, and it's probably hard to see, but if you look on Google right now. The new map is up. Of the Butte salvage yard. We're not the trash dump for the borough. Quite frankly. Glacier View, great community, but their cars, when they jump off and everybody goes up there and watch them jump off, where do they come to? They come to Butte. Everything's coming to the Butte because how many, how many, Jason, how many, um, salvage yards are compliant right now? And have been for the past couple of years.
Probably two.
Thank you.
And there's three.
And that, and that, so the legislation has to take place. King Street's not taking the cars. He can't move them. He's not making any money. It's $155 a ton. He might get, um, 12 tons of truckload. There's no money. So there's an issue there. I mean, I commute again, I hate it. But that's just an issue. I have a 05 car that's going to break down. And when it breaks down, what I'm going to do, I'm going to call it to a truck to take it to the salvage yard. And that's just how it works here. We know this. That's why we have cars sitting everywhere. It's great that we've cleaned up the community. And it's great that we want to continue to clean up and put cars. But we have to keep the train moving. And you're creating a really big disaster out in the Butte, the Butte. You don't, I, I was in industrial stuff. The leaching that's happening in that land right now. Over the past three years. We have had 60 cars, 15 cars, whatever it is at times is getting dumped out there and the only teeth that she has. Is a frigging fence and they can't even keep that up. There's, they're doing that now, trying to put up some, some. I don't know what he's doing, man. It's so frustrating because. I believe in this, this borough. I've lived on that creek for 12 years. The fish are gone. When you guys were kids. The Bowdenburg Creek at where they came up to the spawn was full. I challenge every one of you. Those stacks, they're not, Tim, they're not here. They're 20 and 30 foot high now. The picture from above doesn't do it justice. If you haven't driven out there, do yourself a favor, just drive out there and watch the operation for an hour and see what happens. They've now moved the operation to the next lot over. It's filling up. They put the fence up. They put the black stuff on the fence. So you can't see it from the, from the road. Guess what? You see over top of the fence. Again, this is a big issue, but it's a state issue. And Ms. Carey told me that it has to be legislative. It has to come through legislation to make it something new because we're not a class one borough. We can't do but so much on the legal side. Am I right? Because I think that's what I've been told. You can't do but so much. When it comes to making people do things. Dwight's, he don't care. And what are we going to do? Then we have another area for the borough to clean up. Because the, the owner dies, his son doesn't take care of it, and then we take it back somehow. Again, this thing was grandfathered in. When I moved out there, it was one layer of stuff out there. And now again, we're 30 and 40 feet high, not 30, probably 20 and 30 feet high legitimately. Underneath power lines and things of that nature. So it's very tough for our co-compliance people to work. Because they don't have any teeth. They don't have any, the, 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 the troopers are the same way. They don't have any teeth to do stuff. You have to build these cases. And the troopers that come out to move our squatters, we're in the same boat. Fourth of July weekend, we could all go out there for the whole weekend and clean up. Because half of Anchorage comes out there and parties. And they leave everything there. And then what do we do as a community? Butte community frankly is tired. We're old. I'm broken. I got nine vertebrae fused. I can't go out and pick up stuff like I used to. But I'm here trying to bring this stuff to you guys. Jason asked me not to say that because he knows I'm really passionate about this. But i- it's, it's got to come from way up, guys. We've got to start at the top level. Make it to where these vehicles are moving. This stuff's going to continue to move somehow. And I don't know the answer to that. That's not me. Thanks.
Do I see another green light? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Will, excuse me, Will Hastings, Denial Community Council. Thanks for this meeting. We took it as marching orders last, last assembly meeting or not last one, but back in May, right? You, you guys were asking. About, uh, solutions. So we have to address all the things that you're concerned about, about process. Transparency. Clarity. Putting it into a manual like you're talking about. We've, we've constructed something like that. That in the end, you know, I'm, I'm hearing about, yeah, obviously we want these properties cleaned up. And, and by the way, what we're talking about here is about dealing with the hardest ones. Not the ones where someone wants you to come in and clean. This is, this is about the hardest ones. We all want them cleaned up. But I think what we want more. Is to know that something's being done. Right? And that's what this does. That's what we've constructed is, is about a transparent way. Where you go from point A where there's someone in charge of the process. But then there's a lot of other supporting agencies. That help them out where it's not all on co-compliance. Okay, so. Whether it's this meeting, we're prepared to talk, to talk about it. If I can put it up on a screen or the next one, I would like to do that. And I think it will provide. That starting point for the discussion that you want on, on how, how to go about this. At least put some ideas out there. But I don't want to just extemporaneously do it. We've prepared this and we would like to present either now or at the next meeting. Thank you.
Can I maybe see, let's try to go around the room at least once, if that'd be okay? And then, uh. Cause I don't want to take up a big chunk without other people getting a chance. So. Sorry, guys. I'm just trying to be as fair as, as I can here. So I hope everybody understands that. Not ignoring anybody, but anyway, so anybody that hasn't talked or brought up an idea or a challenge. I, oh, yes, go ahead.
Does this work? It's on the screen. Uh, my name's Rachel San. Um, I'm part of North Lakes Community Council. Specifically. I'm part of the council because I represent the Willow Wall subdivision. Um, I lived there and have lived there for 20 years. We were never part of a community council for some reason. The boundary went conveniently around Willow Wall for a long time. So the minute that they actually, thank you borough for putting us into the community council, I, I of course. Became a part of it. I can speak from experience in the nonprofit world too, because we have started a nonprofit organization. That specifically. Focuses on health and safety and children and the youth specifically in that community. And I don't know your. Represent, do you know how many, how many, uh, individual homes are in that community? Over 400, correct?
That's, that's pretty close guessing.
I've heard different numbers, but it's, it's over 400, over a hundred plus kids. Shipped out and we have a lot of issues and I, and I don't know that, that. I mean, anybody that's lived in Wasilla, I mean, it's the hood. I, we were called the hood. Speaking from the nonprofit world, we, we. We banned together and created a nonprofit and in three years, it took us three years to haul 70. I got the number. 77 tons of trash out of that community. And the volunteer, and probably around about $18,000 to do that. All done with volunteer hours. It is exhaustive. It puts a huge strain on those nonprofits. Uh, I mean, if you, if you, if the borough is wanting those, those. The nonprofit world to get involved and, and help in that kind of thing or filter money through, through the community councils. You know, for some people, the 10, $12,000 isn't going to do it. I, I mean, just the dump fees alone and paying for. You know, Alaska waste or a dumpster from Denali refuse, it's expensive. It is expensive. And, um, you know, I mean, that's just my take on the situation. We are dealing with situat, we do have, we, we've already started where we actually go to homeowners or people that have allowed. Other people to live on their property and, and they have been used for drug trafficking, that kind of thing. To help and they have helped give us money as a nonprofit to help them clean up their properties. We of course take a different, different approach with some of it that. A lot of it is drug and addiction related in our area. So. Part of our nonprofit helps. The people that are involved in that find resources to, to help them to help, you know, so, so we have different. Different ways that we look at it, but. From my standpoint, it's very expensive. And it's exhaustive for the volunteers. Oh my Lord, it is so exhausting. I could, I, we tried to keep track of volunteer hours. It's in the thousands to move 77 tons of trash. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Do I see another green light?
I'd like to say thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sandy Train. I'm with Gateway Community Council. And one of the. I'm more familiar with Anchorage. We lived in Anchorage for 50 years, but. We moved up here about three and a half years ago and five of our children live in the valley. So we're. So we're really involved in what's going on in the neighborhood and in the borough. One of the first things I realized, some of the problems, we drive around to get familiar with the borough and streets and things. But my youngest daughter was looking for a home, and she found a house that she really liked. She found a number of houses she really liked, but did not buy because of the trashy car dumps in the neighborhood. But I, I have a couple minor questions compared to some of the seriousness that you were talking about. For one thing, I appreciate the, the two weeks of, uh, the dump being open. I know we found in Anchorage, a lot of people wouldn't go to the dump in that week that they ate, two weekends in a week, because the lines were too long. So I don't know if that'll be a big prom, big problem. Maybe we need a spring one and a fall one. And, um, we're talking about volunteers. I wonder if somebody's doing it for the borough, if there's gonna be a liability issue, and that's something that might need to be thought about. And, um, as a community council, I would like to know, you know, what's going on and how we can help in, in our community council so that we can get involved, the two. And then I have a question from, experience from a board I was on for many years in Anchorage is, is if people would get one N O V, one notice of violation, and they didn't comply. Well, the next one initially wasn't a big enough increase to make them think about it. You know, maybe it go from a hundred and fifty, I don't know what they are here, but this was a, a Title seventeen one, not, not regarding this. But if they had a hundred and fifty dollar violation, absolutely no big deal. If they only went up fifty dollars for the next one. So we dramatically increased as a board and got approved by the assembly, the violations. You're ignoring one. Well, if the next one comes a little higher, and the next one comes higher, it may make you sit up and comply. So, um, that's just my comments. Thank you.
Do I see, yes, Patty, go ahead.
One of the women I work with, actually, she runs a senior facility in Meadow Lakes. She lives on a, a street there that has a drug, junk, trash, whatever house. And she has continuously complained to the troopers and to the borough about it, and nothing has happened. She sees the cars come in at night, then they're without license plates, and then they're, they're stripped down and gone. She had, they have prostitutes that come in in the evening. They have, uh, drugs are being sold, and, and somebody will be out front telling people to move, to not, not, uh, you know, impede the drug traffic while they're, the guy in the car is going in and buying his drugs. I don't want to be a downer, but I, there is really a major feeling that nothing, code compliance is not doing their job. I know they, I know they try. It's not, I'm not saying they don't try. Whether it takes too long, it's their, their, I would like to see something being streamlined so they could give these damn tickets out a whole lot quicker than they do. I would also like to see, therefore, more code compliance people. I would like to see more troopers. So when we call the troopers, um, you know, you, you can't expect them to come out for an individual incident, or maybe a one-off, but over and over again. Like, I don't understand why they haven't got cameras out there looking at those cars somewhere in the, uh, right-of-way. So they see, they see what's going on. I mean, I have the write-up that she gave me of what she's enduring, and it's not pleasant. I, I'm glad I do not live in that location.
Maybe Officer Anderson can speak to this, but there's AK tips. We went up to Trappers Creek, and they can't get troopers up there. Right now, the state needs sixty troopers. They can't get enough applicants. They're getting people from out of state. Um, it's, it's really bad. They've got the money for them. They just can't find any individuals to actually step up and do the job. But, uh, this AK tips, and I'm gonna let Sergeant Anderson.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Staffing issues is definitely a convenient excuse for us to use, because it is a realistic issue for us. As of today, uh, oh, yeah. I can talk into a radio, but you asked me to talk into a mic. It's a whole thing. So in B detachment, which encompasses the whole Matsu Valley, as well as Glen Allen, all the way up to the Canadian border, and halfway to Toke and down to Valdez, we're at eleven vacancies in the blue shirt trooper side of the house. Ten of those are here in the Matsu Valley. Uh, just to give an example, right now, we have twenty-eight patrol troopers, including sergeants, in Palmer and Matsu West posts. And when you divide that out by the shifts, that's four to five troopers per shift covering those areas. We try to assign a trooper to the Willow-Talkeetna-Trapper Creek area. That sole trooper patrols from mile sixty of the Parks Highway to Byers Lake by themselves. And then when you have incidents like yesterday, where you have a homicide at mile one thirty-six, we pulled two more patrol troopers from the valley to go up there, which left two patrol troopers for the rest of the Matsu Valley. So we feel that issue as well. And your calls, while they feel like they're going ignored, um, they're not falling on deaf ears, because I know the exact house you're talking about in Meadow Lakes. I've been there, made arrests there. It is a real problem. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I wanted to reiterate what the gentleman from the Butte said, and that's legislation. The state troopers are bound by state statute. That's what we can enforce. Mr. Ortiz and my command staff have set up quarterly meetings so that we can work on getting better communication between the troopers and the borough code compliance. And I'd like to see, and I think this is something that's coming, is our troopers having access to that Problem Reporter app. We may be at that house for the drug issue, the trespassing issue, the squatter issue. And while we're on scene, we're gonna jam out a report real quick to the borough to get on the same page. Um, I've worked in the borough for ten years of my twelve-year career. That's the first I've ever heard of that line of communication coming open. I think it's very valuable for us to work together. So I think having, and, and I'd like to see this expand to our dispatch center, which is, you know, we're contracted through the city of Wasilla with MACOM Dispatch. Having a mechanism for the complaints that come into their dispatch center that maybe when the call goes out for an issue, but we don't have a trooper available, a mechanism to alert the borough as well, so we're on the same page and can attack those problems together. I think those are all real easy issues to, to fix, because I bet my next paycheck, my problem houses are your problem houses, without a doubt. So if we're not working together, though, um, all I can do is address the state criminal statute that's being violated, and then we solve that problem, we walk away. Uh, but if we actually work together, I think we'll get a lot more done. And then the only other thing I wanted to touch on, which is a little out of pace from what we've been talking about, but, you know, the issues with tow trucks and towing, um, is definitely something that falls on us as well. We have a really hard time, even on the trooper side of the house, with our tow trucks that are on rotation, for getting junk cars that are state statute, state code, you know, able to tow. It's no secret that some of these tow truck companies are tired of getting called out at, you know, all hours of the day and night to tow a junk car that costs them money in the long run. And so getting denials from some of our tow truck companies has started to happen, where they know the car that we're calling them for, because they've seen it junked out on the side of the road or in the, as a hazard. And we've had a couple of cases where we've had to utilize our push bumpers to push the junk car out of the road, because we can't get a tow truck to come get it. So I think that's something the Assembly is gonna have probably a challenge. Uh, the comment was made a hundred and fifty bucks. And, I mean, the contracts with the state troopers for tow trucks generally run about five hundred bucks just to grab a car before storage fees incur. And the tow truck companies feel like they're losing money with that. So I don't think your one fifty's gonna, and you're talking, that's before you go all the way to Willow. So, um, but yeah, those are just a couple of the comments that I've had so far, but I'm sure there'll be more.
Thank you. Oh, good, okay. Can I go to Glacier View since they haven't spoken yet?
I'm sorry. Okay, so Fred Hirschman, again, from Glacier View. First, Richard behind us, I'm sorry about Arnie's throw the vehicles off the cliff. It has nothing to do with the Glacier View Community Council. In fact, we, we, we started a picnic on the same date, just so local, local people didn't have to contend with all the traffic and stuff. So sorry for to the Butte for, but down the lines of, of cars off the highway, when we do our community cleanup each year, uh, we're aware of many, many vehicles that are on the public, state, federal right-of-way, but aren't on borough lands. And they're not of impediment or danger for traffic. And when we've contacted the troopers about that, we're on our own. In the past, the community council has paid four hundred dollars for a local person to pick up some of those vehicles, per vehicle, to tow them out. I'm not sure that really should be a community council expenditure for, for federal and state highways. Especially in Glacier View, there's a large amount of abandoned Glen Highway. And when we do the cleanup in those areas, we, um, you know, find quite a few vehicles, refrigerators, water tanks, things that have been dumped out there that, that would sure be great if, if we could have borough help in cleaning up. On the heavy items like vehicles and, um, water heaters and stuff, there's been people in our community that have asked if the borough couldn't, with our transfer station at Long Rifle, have an occasional period, maybe two periods a year, where iron-heavy items could be dropped off in a special container. It's difficult for people to get those seventy miles down the way, down the road to the public landfill. So that's been an idea that's been brought up a couple of times, and this might be a good venue to, to be discussing that. On the cleanups themselves, and for the community cleanups each year, for the last, I think, twenty-five years, Glacier View has been doing a roadside cleanup each year, and it's been a long, long-running tradition. I wanna give a big thank to Tim Hale, who was our former representative. For a couple of years ago, the landfill in the borough had started saying that they would not accept stuff that we cleaned up from public lands that were not, you're shaking your head, yes, that weren't from borough property. And in, in thirty miles of the Glen Highway is all state, federal, right-of-way. It's not borough right-of-way. So, um, we really appreciate, Tim, your work in getting the whole Assembly to say, hey, um, you can pick up any public lands in the borough. It doesn't just have to be borough land. So, so thank you on that. What we find in Glacier View with our cleanups, um, we try to schedule them in May, when the vegetation hasn't started growing and the snow is gone. This year, we had snow to the third week of May. So we've done a scheduling where we have a full month for cleanup, and then we finish that with a big picnic. This year, we had ice cream social at the picnic, and we got something like sixty-five people to show up and do cleanup. So, so this year, we cleaned up of the thirty miles of Glen Highway. We signed mile stretches to everybody and cleaned up twenty-seven of those thirty miles. But, you know, it's all, after Arnie's thing, it's all, it's all dirty again, so. So any additional help that we could get, one of the things I was thinking, um, we had Mattson provide us litter picker-uppers a few years ago, but if the borough could have a supply of those that go out with, uh, yellow Elpar bags, that would be great. So, um, also safety vests. The road camp, um, up at Cascade from the state provide, has provided us their discard safety vests so we can give our cleanup people, you know, and the same thing for you guys who are on the Parks Highway. When you're doing cleanup and people are going sixty or seventy miles an hour, it's a real safety concern for, you know, the volunteers who are out there cleaning. So anything as far as safety vests. Another thing I'd recommend, we keep on finding hypodermic needles when we're doing the cleanups. Our community council bought a couple of hypodermic needle boxes to safely put them in, but if those were available through the borough again for cleanups, I think the other community councils will probably have the same problem, you know, with finding hypodermic needles and, and a way to safely get rid of those. So I think, um, main thing is we've got quite a few vehicles that if, you know, in, yeah, I, I agree with everybody else. It's not gonna be, it's gonna be way over a hundred and seventy-five dollars to pull out those vehicles. But, but it should be great if we had some borough funds to help pay for that. Okay, thank you.
So real quick, just to, because I wanna give the state, uh, some credit here. I know Todd's like, what? Just kidding, Todd. Uh, but, um, we did have an issue with D O T having the ability to have vehicles towed outside of the right-of-way. It was a funding issue. Um, and I will say, I think the commissioner got involved. They put some money in the budget. I think it went to the governor's office. So earlier this year, the state did make some changes to put funding in the budget to get abandoned vehicles towed from within state right-of-way. I mean, there was one example, right at like Pittman and, and the Parks Highway, and it just set in the right-of-way. I was like, I think I've been through here like three different weeks, and this thing's still here. So the state has taken action recently to improve that, and Jason, correct me if I stated incorrectly, but through our Problem Reporter app, when you report an abandoned vehicle, if it's in the state right-of-way, the system knows that. So it routes those requests to the state right-of-way folks. So the citizen doesn't have to understand, is this the borough's right-of-way? Is this the city? Is this the, the state? The system takes care of that. I put one in today, so I'll let you know if the state comes and gets it. But I put in an abandoned vehicle one this morning on my way into work, so we'll see if, if the system works as advertised.
Todd, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just, uh, need a little help understanding the economics of the abandoned junk vehicle and the value of scrap. And I know there are some people who can help with this here. So I think what I have heard people say is that somebody needs to subsidize the movement of junk abandoned vehicles out of the state to, uh, someone who, I guess, might be able to use that material. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I think that's, uh, that's part of it, Todd, but I don't think that we need to rely on outside sources to do this. I mean, I don't know. Again, I don't know that the dynamics of shipping it down south or to China or wherever it's gonna go to. But somebody in that market's gotta be wanting the metal, but I, I don't know how that works. King Street is the only thing I've dug into as far as where the, the cars go to. And they, you can go online, and you can see the website, and it shows what the metals are worth. And the junk car is right, I think, two weeks ago was a hundred and fifty-five ton. So that's where, that's where that's at. But yeah, I mean, it, obviously, it takes money to move the stuff around.
If I, if I could just follow up, Madam Mayor, just, so having this, having the state subsidize the removal of junk vehicles is not what I'm hoping for here. But if, if that is really an issue that the state of Alaska, if that's how the state of Alaska has to solve this, because scrap metal prices are down, China's not buying as much as they used to, so on and so forth, I guess that would be good for me to know. And then also for your legislators to know, because it could potentially be a budget item that, um, might result in less overall harm to Alaskans by getting vehicles and junk out of, out of the state. So I'd be happy if anybody could, you know, find information out about that and, and give that to me. That would be great. Thanks.
I'll go now to Willow, since I, he was kind enough to let us go away from him, so go ahead, sir.
I'll let anybody talk. Nobody likes to listen to me. One is a request, and the other is, um, a suggestion. Uh, the first request is, could you send the Problem App link, uh, out to the boroughs? This way, we could pass it off on our, at our next meetings, so everyone has it. Because this is the first I'm hearing about the Problem App. I've never heard of it before.
So.
And. Through the mayor, we, we can have Mr. Ortiz send that out to the community councils.
Okay. And my suggestion, from what I'm hearing from everyone here in the room, is that the code compliance officers, even though they're, you know, they're beating their heads against a rock and doing their jobs, they have no teeth. So it sounds like what we need to do, instead of writing a ticket and then going out and writing another ticket, and then hopefully, you know, we bring a civil case, is make it after two tickets or three tickets that no longer is a civil case, that it now becomes a criminal case. Because when you look at this, because we spoke of leaching and needles and all the other things that are going around these, uh, these sites, it does become a health hazard. And if you cause a health and safety issue to your neighbors, your groundwater or anything else, that's criminal. Especially if you know you have forty-seven cars on your property leaking battery acid into, into the water. battery acid into, into the water. That's going to end up at somebody's house downstream. So, now you have health and safety, which is a criminal. So, I would look at maybe after so many tickets that, instead of this being civil, it now becomes a criminal case. This way, it doesn't get put on the back burner by the DAs. Not to put more work on the DAs, because they're already overworked, but at least this way, it doesn't fall to the bottom of the pile, and the guy sitting here 10 more, 10 years later, and we're still talking about his house. So, thank you.
Melissa, is your light on?
Yeah.
All right.
My light is on. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, you read my mind with more work on the DAs, because that more, making it criminal, that's what it would mean, would be more criminal cases. And the reality is, like the troopers, we have 11 attorneys in our office, including myself. We cover the Matsu Borough, Cordova Valdez, and Glen Allen. And when we're short-staffed, which has been the past, these past COVID years, we've been down two, three attorneys at a time. Our misdemeanor, we cover all misdemeanors. We're not like Anchorage, where Anchorage Borough covers misdemeanor cases. We cover all the misdemeanors, all the felonies. So, our felony attorneys are looking at between two and 250 felony cases apiece that they're handling. Our misdemeanor attorneys are looking at between 600 and 700 cases apiece that they're handling. And that's in the Borough, Cordova, Valdez, and Glen Allen. So, we really have to prioritize and use our discretion in what we are prosecuting, because we have to put our time, unfortunately, at the higher level offenses. So, what these properties do is they bring more crime, obviously. I mean, I'm not, I don't have to tell everybody that there are safety risks to law enforcement, there are safety risks to the neighbors. I have a, both a professional and a personal take on it. There are several properties in my neighborhood that are, quite frankly, scary. And the troopers have been at, at several times recently. They located stolen property from a burglary at one of these places in my neighborhood. And then I did a drive-by, and they ended up just covering all the junk in their yard with tarps that they probably stole, is my guess, maybe as part of the burglary. But, so I definitely would like to see more action taken on cleaning up these properties. I think it would, because the other thing that happens from these properties is it's usually lower-level offenses that come out of the property, like the lower-level thefts and the lower-level drug possessions. And those are the offenses that we have to prioritize and not put our resources into necessarily, because we do have the homicides, the sex assaults, the sexual abuse of minors, and the higher-level offenses. So, cleaning up the property, although, and it's going to take years, obviously, for it to come to fruition, but would eventually lower that level of crime rate. But realistically, we know that in most of our cases, the property owners have no idea what's going on at these houses. These are what we, what we've termed flop houses, where we've got young people coming in and out of them, not the same young people that were there last week. Now, it's a different set of young people, so it's hard to actually, you know, get ahold of the actual property owner, and if they even know what's going on there. One idea I had, though, when I'm hearing exhausted volunteers, shortage of volunteers, is I know there's been programs where we'll use offenders to do community work service, maybe use, maybe not the higher-level guys or girls, but the lower-level offenders to make community work service as part of like a diversion program. So, like, if you stole or had this lower level of drugs, hey, go clean up this area this, with collecting trash, and the case will be dismissed, or something like that. So, that's a potential idea that I, that I wrote down here. Yeah, that's all I got to say.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we have at least one community council.
Sure.
Amber McDonough, Fishhook Community Council Board Member. I just wanted to second some of Rodney's comments about empowering the borough and the code compliance officers to actually do their jobs, and by giving it more teeth, and by escalating it, not just with fines, but with the actual penalties and the going from civil to criminal infractions, I think is good. And the other part that I want to speak about is, the Fishhook Community Council did our own cleanup in May, and we were able to pick up quite a bit of junk, similar to some of the other community councils. And it was very helpful to have the borough support in that as well, and I think we're going to continue to do that annually. But we didn't have a lot of the other, you know, needles and, you know, hazardous waste that a lot of you are describing, fortunately. But we are a riverside community, and I think there needs to be some special focus, either through borough enforcement, to partner with Alaska DEC to really address riverside junk properties that are leaching into the Little Sioux River. The comment from the Butte Community Council member rung true, because I live on the river, and the fish aren't there, guys. They're just not there, and, you know, it's a lot of factors. But when we have access to other ways of gathering information, I think Mr. Ortiz said that he can only enforce properties that he can see from the road. Obviously, we have technology now. We have Google Maps. We have satellite imagery. If, if you're not empowered to use that imagery as part of your code compliance review, I think you should be, and perhaps something that's the assembly could grant you as far as powers. I don't think we, doing something as invasive as drones over properties is probably a little bit much, but like one of the other community council members said about the junkyard that just keeps piling and piling and piling, you can see from satellite images what's really going on. In our case, we have at least one house that's falling into the Little Sioux River, and it would be really nice to get some collaboration on how to get that from becoming a problem within the river. So, I would, I would ask for special consideration for riverside junk. And then, I believe, the state representative, who is not here now, he asked, you know, what can we, what can the state do? And it just came to mind that the Port of Anchorage has a lot of shipping containers that are getting back-hauled empty, and it sure would be nice if the state could partner with them to compact junk vehicles and have them haul the Lower 48 for proper disposal instead of making the Butte area the valley and potentially the state's junkyard. I think that's about all I had, so thank you.
Anyone else from the invited guests? Everybody had a chance to talk?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I know the assembly wants to talk, but I wanted to be sure. Okay, I'm going to, yes, go ahead, sir.
Just want to make one more comment before it turns back over, to talk about the calls for service. Squeaky wheel gets the grease. Keep calling when you have suspicion of criminal activity at a residence. Tell your communities that to keep calling. We don't know the problem exists if we're not told about it when it comes to the criminal stuff. My coworkers and my dispatchers might flog me for saying this later, but keep the calls coming in. It does two things. One, even if it's just a suspicious in nature call or low-level trespassing, one of the policies that we have in place is that call for service is aired over the radio immediately. And so, even if a trooper might be driving to another call for service, if it's not a priority call, and they're driving by that address that's being aired over the radio, we might divert and go and be able to contact those folks as it's occurring and actually have criminal enforcement take place. What it also does is, even if it's the busiest time of day and all the troopers are, I mean, it's not uncommon for us to be 15 or 20 calls pending on our call board, but if fill-in-the-blank road keeps calling and calling and calling, when we do get a rare, slow moment to go do proactive policing and community policing, our troopers will remember that road name and hopefully go back. We do that regularly, where maybe we didn't get to go when you called, because we were busy with higher priority calls, but at 3:00 in the morning, when that activity's probably still going on, and we have the opportunity to be proactive, we will go back and, you know, patrol those areas and look for that criminal activity. So, I know it feels like nothing's being done. I live in the valley as well. I feel that pressure as a resident here, but keep the calls coming in. Not saying that the response will change immediately, but over time, it lets us know where the problems are.
Thank you. Melissa, and Jason, your light is on. Did one of you...
Oh, I just had a real quick comment to that. From the district attorney's office perspective, we also, when we start seeing the same names coming up over and over, that also gets our attention as far as the first time my, low-level offender might be declined for prosecution, but this person's coming back a second, a third, and a fourth time with the same kind of offense, it changes the way that that case is evaluated. So, I would mirror, keep the calls coming. Don't stop calling as far as when you suspect criminal activity.
Okay. All right. Yes, Patty, go ahead.
Just a quick plea. I hope we can do this again. It's been fun, and it would be great if we could make this a regular kind of exchange. Once a quarter, somebody said, once, at least once a half, or at least once a year, maybe, somewhere between those.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to give the invited guests one more chance, because once I bring it back to the assembly, it, you may not get another chance. As you remember, all of us up here are elected officials, so we all like to talk. So, anyway, one last chance. Oh, yes, go ahead.
So, just Amber McDonough with Fishhook Community Council, again, just to second what Ms. Patty Fisher said. I think this was a little bit of a tough meeting for folks to attend in the middle of summer with so much going on, and you can see by the number of empty seats that, you know, we're about half the community councils in attendance. So, I would second her suggestion to have this meeting again, again in the fall or quarterly, or whatever makes sense. So, thank you.
And tonight, I had said something to you regarding some information you wanted to present, but...
Yes, ma'am, it's 10 slides.
Yeah.
It provides the basis for what you're asking.
The only, the only way that we could do that, because we can't take the thumb drive from you and put it into our system. It has to be washer, whatever. I don't know what the system is. So, if you could take and maybe email it to the clerk...
I can email it right now.
Yeah, can you email it to the clerk, and then, and then she could put it up, so we could all see it. Okay? So, as you know, the borough a few years ago had a little bit of breach, and we do not want to repeat that again. And you, as taxpayers, don't want to repeat that either, okay?
Lonnie dot McKechney, right up here in the highest fellow.
I should have had you send it to me.
Oh, yeah, his is a lot shorter.
I don't have my computer.
Lonnie dot McKechney.
Matsugov.us.
Well, I have a whole bunch of other people that have been wanting to ask questions before you, sir.
I still have you down, Assemblymember, too.
We didn't hear from DEC. Would you have some comments while we're waiting for technology to catch up with us?
Well, I work, I'm with the solid waste group, and so, our regulations basically exempt private residences, duplexes, and farms from the solid waste regulations. So, as far as your private property cleanups, from the state's solid waste regs, there's not really ways that we can provide any type of enforcement or help in that way, other than that we definitely support the effort, but we don't have any type of enforcement authority over that.
Okay.
And as far as junk, that is also, under the state regs, junk is not considered a waste, and so, we don't regulate salvage yards or recycling facilities or any junkyards. So, so there again, we don't really have any kind of enforcement authority over those. So, when I get a complaint, I refer it to the code compliance officer of the borough that the complaint comes from because of that.
Okay. James, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, so similarly, from the perspective of spill prevention, preparedness, and response, you know, we get calls, we're familiar with these calls to these properties, I think, all around the state, not just here in Matsu. You know, if, a lot of times, what it ends up being is surfacing. It can be observed from above, let's say, a drone, but without going onto the property, it's difficult. Photos are good if there's evidence of a spill. We oftentimes don't get photos of these spills, obviously because of the trespassing issue, similar to what code compliance was saying, is, you know, we're able to observe what we can from the road, from the right-of-way, you know, entering a property without permission, that kind of thing. And from a prevention standpoint, you have to be housing tanks of 1,000 gallons or more before you fall under SPAR's prevention regs. So, I also have referred spill calls to code compliance, because, you know, we don't have the teeth, and it needs to be written into our regs before we can do anything. So, that said, we have a 24-hour spill reporting tools, both online and you can call, and we love to hear about spills and concerns that you have, so.
Okay, thank you. You turn the mic off then, please, okay? And the clerk has the, and it's up there, so you want to turn your mic on and say anything, or you just want us to read through them? What's your preference, sir?
I'll speak to them, and you can read through them at the same time, because people learn differently, right? They're either visual or oral. This goes to both.
Okay. So, can everybody, everybody look at the screens, okay?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, go ahead and go to the next, next screen. Okay, so this was just in response to what happened in May, when we presented, this is our, our thoughts on, on some processes that could be instituted with a whole-government approach with this. But we want to emphasize that we have no interest in these slides, we have no interest in, in property owners that actually live and reside at the property. What we're talking about are properties that are in some sort of pseudo-abandonment. The property owner doesn't live there. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so, what was presented last time in May, and then I got some personal phone calls on this, is that the way these have been handled in the past has been through personal assemblyman interaction, and that's unsustainable. There really should be a structure to this, and that's what we're going to get to. It's unsustainable and inefficient. This should be running in the background of what you all do on a daily basis, which is to make law, right? So, these are the things we'll talk about. We'll go over definitions, because definitions are very important for any kind of code change. We'll be talking about the intent of what we're trying to get at here, and a recommended end state, and an example of a proposed process we could do, but then also the particular challenges we see with this, and there's probably a lot more. Next slide, please. Okay, so, when we were talking about earlier, a gentleman discussed about felonies. Okay, so Maricopa County in Arizona has come up with a way where it's not just civil, but it's also a felony. So, the, I won't belabor this, this is now part of public record. People can read this. I represented it in our last presentation in May, but no sense reinventing the wheel. There are other counties, other places out there that have done things, that have taken it out of the civil part and put it into the felony part, if we needed to do that, if you thought that was a place where you wanted to go. Next slide, please. Okay, so for definitions, again, very, very important. This isn't, this isn't exhaustive. This is why there's a working group. We also agree that there should be further, further meetings like this to kind of flesh things out like this, but we started and put some definitions out there. So, like, a harmful property would be, it has a specific meaning. It is one where criminal and illegal activity is occurring, and then we define what criminal and illegal activity would be. So, criminal activity would be like drug dealing, okay? And an illegal activity could be illegal dumping, all right? Derelict property is a property in a state of disrepair or abandonment that's negatively impacting those around. There may not be necessarily these other criminal aspects to it, but it's definitely having an effect on the ability to people to live in dignity, sell their properties, et cetera. Private property owners, this has a definition. They have to be, it's not just individuals, but as we've seen, there's trusts, there's LLCs, there's companies, properties in probate. They're all owned by someone or something, and you need some way to go after, not just someones, but the some things, too. A designated property would be something that happens out of this process, that you'll see in the next few slides, where it gets designated. Designated property has, has this definition of, by which a problem property is identified and established. Then we go through what good faith actions might be that a private property owner could take, and people have kind of talked about that earlier. Someone mentioned cameras. Someone mentioned cameras, we have that in there as well. Where they can, if someone's in Oklahoma and they want to, they can't control their, their property up here. Things that they could do in good faith within, which then, you know, where the, if something's going to happen with that property, some sort of injunction or whatever, we know that they've operated in good faith and we don't necessarily go, you know, back to them. Next slide please. Okay, a little bit hard to see here, but the intent is, is to take on the issue of mitigating these harmful and derelict properties, okay? Where the property owner does not physically reside there. And physically reside, this needs some care and discussion because, again, definitions are very, very important. We need to make sure it's very tight so that, you know, you could make workarounds with this. A property owner could do that. So that's why there's a lot of emphasis, need to put a lot of emphasis on what that means. Neighborhoods surrounding, another part of the intent is neighborhoods surrounding harmful or derelict properties do not bear an uncoordinated taxation burden. That's what we were seeing in our community council where a particular property was downgraded, their property values collapsed while everyone surrounding them went up. That speaks, there's a, I don't think it needs much definition to show what that would mean to the surrounding property owners when they see this happen, but they get the opposite effect. Property owners of derelict and harmful properties have a means to request assistance. Property owners of derelict and harmful properties that take steps in good faith to correct properties are not penalized with tickets or other legal mechanisms. And then a process for resolving derelict and harmful properties within two years. That's the other part of this is we need some definition and clarity to it where people kind of see where this is in the process. Next slide please. Okay, so the general premise is we need a very clear process for identifying these properties. We need an objective process. An objective process, an objective criteria, and we will offer those here shortly. An example would be property designations established. That's very objective, right? Three tickets, objective. Verified incident of criminal activity from AST, that's objective. Lack of response or engagement by property owner, that's objective. You could come up with all these things which help then bring, build the case later on, right? For other, for an attorney to take action on. Property, and while this is all happening, property tax relief for those properties that are surrounding these harmful and derelict properties until the issue is resolved satisfactorily. Okay? And surrounding needs to be defined. We need a central point of contact. There's a lot of players in the room here. There's AST, there's code compliance, there's D E C, there's the attorney. But who's overall leading it and then getting supported? That needs to be defined. We'll come up with a possible solution to that, but it's up to you all to decide who's most appropriate for it. Whoever that central point of contact is needs to have active support from, from supporting agencies. They can't do this alone. I was in the military for 20 years. We had something called supportive supporting. There'd be the supportive commander, supportive commander had, was guy that was going to go out and go to war. But everyone else that was designated in writing who it was that was supposed to supply planes and bullets and missiles and people and all that kind of stuff. They weren't doing it alone. Next slide please. Another I chart, but this is a recommended end state. So you create and establish within Borough Code, a clearly written, transparent and accountable process for mitigating and resolving these impacts. Within code, you ensure the borough offices have the necessary authorities and funding to enforce compliance and initiate due process. And then establish clear transition guidelines for escalation from borough officers and private property owners. Part of this would be establishing a working group that meets, say, every quarter. Led by Borough Code Compliance, though it could be anyone, and supported by the following agencies, okay? And they're all tasked with sharing information and identifying these harmful and derelict properties. Okay, using a whole of government approach. So the working group could be co-compliance, tax assessment, borough attorney, borough manager, community council representatives, Alaska State Troopers, on and on and on. Alaska Child Support, they also run cases on some of these properties. But basically everyone has one little piece of information and every quarter you get together and you share it all and you can start building the case for these properties. It can expand beyond this list. Next slide please. Okay, example ways a property owner can request good faith. So allow public safety to install monitoring cameras on their property. Grant public safety or Alaska State Troopers standing authority to enter their property without a warrant. Approach community councils or assembly representatives with a request for borough dumpster assistance in cleaning up their property. These would be good faith ones. We could come up with a lot more. You know, they're going to be a little bit controversial, I understand that, but these are some ideas. You asked for ideas, we're coming for that, hopefully. Next slide please. Okay, I'm sorry it's small, but this would be the whole process. So the standing working group identifies a harmful or derelict property. The property doesn't have the owner physically residing, that is criteria number one. And has at least two of the following. Properties had reports, not necessarily AST's come there, okay? But that, you know, you're tracking everything that's happening, it's had reports, right? Or they've responded to it. Properties had co-compliance with two tickets of complaint or compliance. Maybe it's more, you know, again, very objective, you could set this all up. Emergency services or co-compliance require security support if they go to this. This happens to one of our properties. Fire department won't go in unless there, there's armed troopers there to support them. Community council via complaints from citizens submits a problem property, et cetera, other examples. But that's the first part, designate it. Then code compliance or whoever, okay, whoever the central point of contact is informs that property owner and then a two-year clock starts running. And the property designation, property designation letter is sent out, outlines the issues, what good faith options are open for the property owner. After that, then the working group continues to monitor what's going on with this property. This is the transparency part. Everyone will know exactly where this property sits. Has the property owner responded to pay for tax, tickets? Are they current on their taxes? Have they requested assistance in good faith? Have there continued to be reports to AST? Are there continued to be complaints of illegal dumping? And are there continued complaints by citizens, community councils? Consistently no reports for one year after a property is cleaned up. Let's just say that at, you know, it's two years, right? And the property owner, and I think you just had this happen with the $188,000 property where right to the last minute, then the property owner cleans it up. Okay, great. Well, in this process, it's two years. So if at 23 months, the property owner cleans it up and then a year later, it's dirty again, it doesn't start back at, at month one, it's month 23. But it, you know, you outline all this in code and everyone understands it and it's clear that it won't be any kind of surprise, it'll be very consistent with anyone. After two years pass, the property issues haven't been resolved, then it goes to, then it goes to legal action. And people that are surrounding these properties will know, and that's what they're looking for. They're just looking for, it's not necessarily it's getting cleaned up. They're just looking for what's happening, where is it? That will do a whole lot. Yes, it'd be ideal to have it all cleaned up. We know the logistical problems, there's legal problems. We know that this will also go on and on and on and on. But just knowing that, you know, from, well, AST, do you have it or code compliance? No, it's, it's here, we see it. If they want to sell their property, they'll also be able to tell someone who wants to buy it, hey, it's at this stage, right? Next slide please. So the challenges with this, how to handle a private property where the owner's a trust or in probate, or it's a private company or a public company? That would need to be fleshed out. Clean up a property just can't happen, and this has already been talked about exhaustively here. You know, we just can't go onto properties and clean them up unless the owner wants you to. And that's what this does not, we're not, those aren't the problems we're, we're facing. We're facing the opposite, we're facing these tough ones where they don't want you to come on. Clean up a property using community council as a sole entity, that's not the desired outcome of what outcome we're talking about here. It doesn't fit. There's liability concerns and we've talked about this. Next slide please. So doing nothing has costs and doing something has costs. And just like Assemblyman Yant, you said that it's basically, I'll paraphrase it, a ticking time bomb when those cars are in that lot, right? Eventually, it's got to get cleaned up, something's going to happen. So we're to the point, at least within our community council, where we know there's going to be costs in some way, shape or form with this. But what's more of interest to us is just knowing that there's a process and that it's transparent and you can see it where that property sits. That's all, that's all we need, want to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any of the other community council members have comment before we move to the Assembly? Yes, Jason, go ahead.
Mayor, can I just touch on a couple of things before we go on to the Assembly? So just wanted to recap just some of the ideas, some of the things that we heard today to make sure. And I took pretty good notes from everyone, but talking about creating plans and policy for Representative, or Assemblymember Two, Yant Hale. Also wanted to, to talk about, you know, that's some of the things that we heard about was code enforcement, addressing beyond, beyond what they do now from beyond the street. Does, how does that look at? That was one of the things that we heard from, from people. We talked about the transparency and how this process goes out. Some of the issues, some of the, some, some potential solutions that some of this could and it can create a bigger conversation is how, how do we look at our landfill? And how do we address that? Because if the landfill was free, does the public want to pay for that? That's a topic that, that addresses some of this. A lot of people mentioned a lot of things about properties next to them and whether it, what, what it looks like and how does, how does that create things? And the topic or idea of zoning, that is a whole nother conversation that could take part of this, you know, go in different ways. I wanted to clarify on the problem reporter. I think I might have said something incorrectly about it. I just wanted to make sure everyone's clear. Problem reporter doesn't let you put in co-compliance cases at this time, but it does address all the things that I listed on there. So I think it's a great idea. I will put together something that it kind of does an explainer about this and I'll make sure I get that out to the community councils. And then, yeah, a bunch of other stuff in there, but I just wanted to mention some of those things on there and I will make sure I follow up on these with Assembly and the managers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank the Assembly for their patience. I know you're all chomping on the bit and I know you all have good opinions. So my trustee clerk here has made a list, so we will go down the list. Deputy Mayor, you're first on the list. Go ahead, sir.
Save the worst for first, okay. Amazing feedback. This is, this has been an awesome evening so far. I got a couple of ideas for Manager Brown and team to kick around. I know that these are not anything that can be answered tonight, these are just ideas. One is not everybody has the means or the equipment to do what Mr. Two did in his district last year where he went and actually used his equipment to clean up that project. So I know Public Works is very busy filling potholes and doing things, but they do have equipment and possibly if there's a convenient time and it was a coordinated effort, that was scheduled upfront with community councils, it's possible that maybe they could use their equipment and manpower to go and help a community council with heavy things, right? You guys can't move cars, it's not safe. It takes equipment to do that and that's going to be your most expensive cost. So possibly, Tom's smiling, he's a great guy, he's got an awesome team. Maybe, maybe Public Works can help with this. Another idea, hearing the story about, that Mr. Heller told about, I just, I hate inefficiencies. It's, it's like the root of all nothing happening. So when I hear about cars heading from Big Lake all the way to the Butte, I give a good smile to Tim because we like to mess with each other. But then I think, man, how sad is that? That's farther to the Butte than it is to the port. And so it made me think of a conversation that I had with Mr. Two a couple of days ago where he actually had an idea, talking about these junk cars. I didn't know they brought 155 bucks a ton, I'm not in that business. But would it have been a better idea? And could the borough look at, we have multiple acres out at the port. Could we look at possibly having the vehicles go there? So they don't go all the way to the Butte and then some go, someday go all the way to Anchorage where they would leave on a barge? Why not dedicate some land at the port? They go there until we get enough together that they can leave on a barge. I don't know how many cars it takes to fill up a barge. I don't know if it brings 155 bucks a ton. I don't know how any of that works, but something we could consider. We do have a lot of acres out there and I'm sure that Moki would much rather have them in his district out in, out in, out at Port McKenzie than Mr. Heller and them would like. So I just, I don't like hearing about the inefficiency of taking them out to the Butte. As much as fun as it is for me to look over and laugh at Tim, it's inefficient, it's not fair. It doesn't really solve the problem. Let's get the damn things to the port so we can get them out of here eventually. Because really ultimately, we're just kicking the can down the road. If we put them on, take them one from one piece of property, put them on another, that makes no sense. Where do they eventually go and how do they get there? Let's get them there as fast as possible. So it sounds like they probably leave on a barge. I remember Mr. Two telling me that, they leave out of Anchorage. Why can't we have them leave once a year out of Port McKenzie on a barge? I don't know, just an idea to kick around. The other thing is, I, obviously we all knew at the beginning of this meeting, we need to do this again as soon as possible. I would propose October 24th. The other thing is Stephanie and I and Mrs. McKee sent on a joint school board committee where we meet with other Assembly, or other school board members. We can't have a quorum there, it's not all the time. But maybe we could set up a joint committee where two or three Assembly members meet with the community councils every quarter. And then we have like an annual meeting like this once a year or something. So just an idea to, to, to kick around. You know, I would sign up to be on that. Obviously the one, the school one means the most to me because I still have kids in the district, but I would sign up to be on that one if there wasn't two or three other volunteers. So just an idea. So that's all I got was those things, thanks. Oh, and October 24th, I did propose that, we'll see where that goes.
Thank you. Thanks all for coming. Some of these ideas are just amazing. I appreciate the effort that Will and Community put into kind of a really detailed thing. I guess I operate that too, way too. I want a process that makes sense for, the community makes sense for the borough's priorities. Doesn't like, the last place, last resort, I think, is law enforcement. They're already taxed with so much. Like if we can solve this problem in other ways, we need to think about it. I, I think moving forward, and it sounds like Jason Ortiz is already thinking about it, but I think we need to document what we heard here and what some of the solutions were and what some of the thoughts are about, you know, some of the response from administration, if we could do something like that. So that's in writing. So when we show up for our next meeting, we have a record of what we've talked about. So we're not, I mean, there's so many ideas. So we can kind of pull the, the best ideas to the top to address these things. I had the same thought about backhauling cars on all these empty containers. Could we do that? I hear a lot of frustration from people feeling like these places aren't being resolved. So I did have one question, which is with things like the problem reporter, we have a record of where we are at in the process with these properties. Can we, like, I know for roads, if your, your road isn't being plowed, you can look online and see if it's been reported. So you at least know it's been reported, it's on the list. Could we do something like that for the community? So you can look and see this property has been reported and maybe where it's at in the process? If we have a very distinct process? Like, so at least people feel like this is, you know, like something is happening with this. Because you, you do feel like sometimes you're just, you're going into a vacuum and it's not a fair representation. When we had a, well, we have kind of a, a house in our neighborhood that's an issue and then people drive down and they do drugs. And when we had the trooper come talk to us and we said, could we put up cameras? He said, you can try that, but they get stolen. And, you know, could we report license plate? You can do that, but we, there are a lot of cases and so it's a good thing to do. He didn't discourage us from that. He said, the best thing is to have good use of the area. So the, you know, the sunlight disinfects it. And I think of like Jim Creek, which was just a disaster. And we set up a shooting range and we, we brought in people. So I know we just heard a little bit about land use, but could we as a borough do things that would help with some of these areas? You know, how you, how the land is managed, that we could bring in good uses? So, you know, if there's good people around there, the bad people do not want to be there. So I don't have a, a great idea on that. I definitely have a concern about the budget. If we just jump in and start doing things, are we just going to clean up a property? And it's going to be like the compound where the, the property gets cleaned, but the people move on and there's another piece of property that then... move on and there's another piece of property that then gets dumped on? Like, I want to spend our money effectively, and I, I want us to go in clear-eyed about the cost to the landfill, because it's not free. Even if we give free dumping, all of us pay the cost of the landfill. So that just kind of comes back to having a really well-thought-out process. Yeah, just, I think there were just a lot of great ideas I heard. I really hear loud and clear, you can't put this all on the community councils to do cleanups. I mean, I participate in those, that people, you just don't get a huge amount of volunteers, and it's exhausting. And so how we deal with that issue, I just, again, want to just thank everybody for coming and the thoughts into this. And if we can document what we heard today, and I think October 24th is a good meeting, I'd rather kind of have a, another meeting relatively quickly before we all kind of lose our momentum. But I'd like to come into the next meeting with some written material in front of us. Like, if we document it and send it all out to the community council so you can kind of see if we missed something, or you think there's an important point, that, you know, these would be the three ones that you'd pick for us to prioritize. That'll help us come in with some structure for our second meeting. But I think this has been really good, just to say, this is really a problem. Let's see what we can do about it. So thank you.
So on the MSB problem reporter, you can report an abandoned vehicle, you can report right-of-way complaints, and you can also report trash in the right-of-way, and then animal care and road maintenance. And that goes directly to the borough or whatever department it needs to go to. I believe that's right. Yes? Yeah? Yep? Okay. So how do we get volunteer prisoners? I'd like to call up and get some.
Want me to volunteer some prisoners for you? I can think of some off the top of my head right now, but, no, my idea was more what I've seen other, or what I've heard of other offices do is they create pre-trial or pre- conviction diversion programs. So we have a set of guidelines where this is a certain level offense, this is a certain level offender as far as criminal history, whether or not they have a lot of cases coming through our office. So guidelines on this is a person that we're going to offer this diversion program to. And then part of the diversion program is you do this particular amount of community work service through this cleanup, and the state will either dismiss the case if there's, because there's so many ways you could do it. You could charge it and then dismiss it, or just not charge it from the get-go. There's just a lot of ways it could be structured, but it's definitely something that I've seen done by other prosecutors' offices.
So, I don't know, I'm pretty simple. So what I'd like to do is call tomorrow, and I'd like 10 prisoners for the next day for eight hours.
Okay.
So that's what I need to know how to do, and, and, and all the other stuff, I really, I don't want to concern myself with that.
Is this like, it can, so you're thinking like prisoners without consent, you're going to go do this, or someone that's got to agree?
However you do it, I would like to get some volunteers, and if they're down there at Knick Goose Bay getting a nice meal, I'd like them to come on over and help me.
Yeah, I think we also have to be cognizant of the type of people we're going to work with, too. Like, we don't want someone straight out of, you know, Matsu pre-trial or whatever. So there's definitely guidelines, but it's definitely a program that can, and should probably, I think, should be looked into, because it would also help as far as our caseloads and cases coming through our office, and also get some more offenders held accountable. So it is definitely something that I would be interested in working with somebody to, to look into.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to just call and say, I need five tomorrow, 8:00 AM.
I don't see that happening, but I do see talking about it.
Ever, ever how it works, I'd, I'd like to see that happen, because we could definitely use them.
I think Nick is Assemblyperson two, maybe.
Oh, I got to call, Nick.
So typically what happens.
I need 10 tomorrow, Nick.
So I'm reaching back, but before I started working here, I worked in the municipality of Anchorage from 2000, 2005, and we had that program. And Anchorage, because it's its own city, they would, you would, you would get charged with something like low-level, like she said, like theft, or, you know, maybe disorderly conduct or something. And the prosecutor would say, okay, look, you're going to be available, you know, this week, and you're going to do 10 or 12 or 15 or 30 hours of community work service, and you're just going to show up here. And you show up in the morning, and the municipal employee would tell you where you were going, what you were doing for the day. You might pick up garbage, you might mow grass. So it's not, oh, I need 10 people tomorrow. It's, there's a set amount of people showing up that is a way it could work, but we could certainly work on developing a program like that. It's just details to work out. I'll work on it.
I'd be happy to send a van out to pick them up.
I'll hold you to it.
I definitely will.
Assemblyperson two, Willow has her hand up. I don't know. Can we interrupt, and then I'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Mr. Two, I can speak to this because the life I just left, I dealt with this. I come from the Lower 48, from Oregon specifically. Oregon Revised Statute does have in their statutes where they do have low-level offenders, folks we call close to the gate, one to two years left, where they are hired out as work crews. They come with a correctional officer to make sure that they stay and do their jobs. They come with their equipment, and you can hire them for a certain amount of hours to do cleanup. Generally, they clean up like the county fairgrounds and, you know, areas like that, but they've also done roadside cleanup. We also, in our parole and probation offices in Oregon, community service. So if you are that kid that's been spray painting graffiti and you get caught, part of your sentence is that you work X amount of hours cleaning the road, picking up garbage, assisting in some of the cleanup that we're talking about here. So if you look at the Oregon Revised Statues and the Oregon Department of Corrections, you'll be able to find where you can do that. And Oregon Parole and Probation also has it.
Also, I know under former Ben Cottle, I don't know if the city of Wasilla does it now, but he had prisoners come in from Goose Creek in the spring and, and worked throughout the summer. So anyway, but go ahead, Assemblyperson two.
So I think I'll have Nick work on it. I don't think we can afford an airline ticket, so we'll, we'll try to go to the Goose Center and get those guys. But thank you. So then the next thing is like, maybe, maybe we need to look harder about these cars, because really, it almost might be the borough's problem, because it's so, it's, it's a huge problem. Like one of the folks out here say, you know, you get so many miles on your car, then it goes to the junkyard. Well, that's pretty much kind of what really happens. And I don't know of the private sector that really steps up to the plate and says, we'll take care of it. It, it has to come with great rewards. And most of these places that we clean up, they've already stripped the valuable material off the car. So when you try to get a private sector tow truck recycling company to take that car, all they're really doing is taking the weight and the liability of that vehicle, which is the oil and the tires and the battery assets, the, the other fluids, which is brake fluid and antifreeze. So maybe the borough does need to make a harder look and see what, what is our, what is our duty? You know, what is, what should we take a hold of on these cars? So, and I think running them, maybe a suggestion would be running a borough facility out at port, because in all honesty, no matter what happens to the cars, they get on a barge and they leave here. So I don't know. Just some thoughts. And then I want to say thank you to all the folks that came out here, and I appreciate you caring enough about your community to give up your time. And thank you.
Assemblyperson Fana, do you have comments, sir?
Yeah. Thank you. My first question originally was how long we're going to stay here, and I guess this is our kind of final comments is my understanding.
Yeah, we will have final comments. If you want to make them now, that's fine, or we'll go through everybody on the assembly and then come back for final comments, whatever you prefer to do, sir.
Okay. My first question was to Mayor was, what's our time? So we can kind of plan if, how much people, how late people are planning to stay here so that we can kind of, if we have to take a break, we'll take it and then we'll continue, because I wanted to know that. But I'll just go through some of the points I made. One of the ideas we had, and I think we previously was, idea was floated around, on the more severe cases, perhaps each district or Assemblyman can work with community council to nominate one or two severe cases that we could really put some focus on that, and perhaps start the process moving on those. And I think in my district, there's probably a couple that we can fight without a problem, and with one specifically that has been here that we heard of already. I'm excited, or I'm, I would be very interested in talking to the office about potentially have a workout, a, some kind of help with volunteers, because anytime you're doing anything, that's a, having actual hands is always, especially on a weekday where you're trying to do something, it's one of the more difficult things to do. And perhaps like I earlier mentioned about adult and teen challenges where these people are not incarcerated, they're on the, already maybe on the, in the program to pretty much transition to a fully thing, but we can work with DA's office to say that whoever actively participates in some kind of program that really benefits the community, that could be a, a very good criteria to show their way of putting their effort into improving the community here. And I think knowing that, it would be very easy for those people, and I've spoke to some of them directly, that are having sentencing issues or the plea deals or whatever they're going through, they would be, I think, very excited to, to put their effort to show that they have changed and they have improved certain ways of their past life and earned that good credit. And I think that would be something that we would encourage, and, and I think it would could go a long way. And I personally want to thank the community, Tenana Community Council, because I've been to the meeting since they brought up the attention, and I think we made a good progress. And I thank you for the presentation that you've also had. And I think last point was about using the port area where we have a lot of area where it's, we could perhaps do something to organize the vehicle or scrap metal place. I would be in the full support of that, because then when the prices are right and logistics are in place, I think it'd be right there, very easy to just move it and to sell it, and perhaps that, that would help this process overall. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say, Tenana, you guys hit it out of the park. I think that's a really good foundation that could be built on, expanded, you know, looked at, tweaked. I think that's fantastic. And then I wanted to reiterate what the sergeant had said, keep calling, like, keep calling. I tell everybody who calls me that. I tell everybody who calls me that, you, you gotta keep calling. They say, well, I call the troopers and nothing happens. I said, they, they take a log. They hear that, they hear that location over and over and over again, you know? It moves slow, but, but it works. And a big shout out to Mr. Ortiz and his team, co-compliance team out here. You know, they, they answer the, they answer the phone when I call, they go and look at the properties when I ask them to, and, and you can see the improvement, you know, it takes time, but you can see the improvement on these properties. Butte Salvage is, is a good example. You know, it is not in compliance. It's one of the salvage yards that's not in compliance, and, and they are, you know, trying to come into compliance by building that, you know, repairing their fence. That's what they got, drop all those new piles they got driven there, you know what I mean? And that's, and that's, you know, that's code compliance. But I do think that, you know, we need to give them better tools to work with, better enforcement tools that, that have teeth, that, you know, that, that, I think that's a, I think that's a big part of the issue. You know, these, these fines and stuff, you know, yeah, that, you know, they work, but only on a certain type of customer, you know what I'm saying? So, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I had to say, and I will skip comments later.
Okay. Okay. All right. For the record, I would just, and for those of you that haven't noticed, we do have two staffers here this evening from the legislative office, one from Representative McCabe's and the other from Senator Shower. So if you are in their areas and you have some concern, you probably can catch them before they go out the door. And so they, I see them taking notes back there, so I think there, we do have representatives both in the House and Senate in the Valley that are willing to assist us if there is some changes that need to be made on that level. So I guess maybe we will, I'll ask for final comments then. Let me just ask one last time, anybody from the invited guests that would like to say anything? No? Okay. Anybody from the general audience that have some burning thing? No? Okay. So Assemblyperson Fana, do you have some parting comments, sir?
I think I went through pretty much most of the things that I said, but thank you so much. I really appreciate all of the input, and I'm looking forward to those who be willing to take it sometime after all to ask, and I know, then specifically, Tenana Community Council had some questions with a specific case issue, which I would mind, would mind staying and talking a little bit about that. And to the other departments, if you guys will stay around for just for a little bit so we can at least introduce ourselves to you guys directly, and perhaps exchange a way to contact each other, that would be great. And overall, thank you for everyone who participated, and I look forward, and I would be more than willing to accept the date that was proposed to have another meeting like this.
Assemblyperson hours, parting comments?
I just, I think two hours is about, two, two and a half hours is about the right amount. And I'd rather have more meetings that are this length than like try to do it all in four hours, because I think we need time to process it. And then maybe next meeting, we let the public go first and the assembly doesn't get to ask any questions.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing else other than what I said earlier. Thank you guys for coming. Much appreciated.
Madam Clerk? Mr. Attorney, parting comments? You got some work to do?
Got a little work to do, you know? So that everybody understands, you know, I know that there's been discussion about like, you know, seeing the process and what goes on, and I'll talk to the manager about that. And, you know, part of the issue is, is that there is a process, you know? Part of that thing was, you know, you know, repeated citations, you know, known properties, that, that, that's kind of, that's already in place. And when we sue people for injunctions, we get court orders all the time, ordering people to clean up. And then we'll move for contempt orders, and we'll get a court order holding someone in contempt, and they'll walk out of the courtroom. We thus far have not been able to convince any judge that this warrants throwing somebody in jail over. It's hard. We've asked, I think the other night when we were talking about that $188,000, we finally found a piece of property that was worth more than the liens that were on it. So we're able to go through the process of selling it. Right before we sold it, the property owner showed up and sold it himself, but he was held in contempt and was fined initially $5 a day, and then $50 a day, and they had $188,000 judgment against him, and nothing, he didn't clean up anything for years, did nothing. It was only because the property was valuable. Some of the cases we have now, you know, you've got $800,000 worth of IRS liens on some of them. We've got $400,000 of child support liens on a piece of property that's worth $35,000. There's not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot we can do, but some of these ideas probably help. And I appreciate all the input, you know? Part of what goes on here is we talk with code compliance, and sometimes it feels like it's code compliance and they bounce at the law, and we talk with code compliance, and getting more people into the conversation is certainly helpful and with more ideas. So we'll be working on some stuff. Thanks.
Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments?
Not really. I thought it was really interesting. I can't wait to see what comes up in October, you know, where this, I'm kind of the Energizer Bunny, the action figure kind of person. I want to talk about it, I want to do it. So it'll be really interesting to see where we get, where, how close we are to getting something done. So, yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay. Assemblyperson two, parting comments?
I would just say again, thank you, folks, and I greatly do appreciate your concerns and, and time about trying to get this taken care of.
Assemblyperson Hale, parting comments? No? Okay. Assemblyperson Banir, parting comments?
Yes. Problem Reporter for Matsu Gov, that's a good one. And then I got AK Tips. This is just an app, get it on your phone, it's anonymous, you take a picture, you can send it, you take a video. It's anonymous. You take a picture, you can send it, you take a video, you can send it and it, you're anonymous. Okay? They see pictures of a vehicle or something. They're going to see that over and over. Eventually it's going to come around. Um, I just can't speak enough for that. The other thing for our Senator and, uh, House, we need tougher crime laws, tougher on drugs. Most of these places are drug houses, the flop houses. I mean, 99% of all this cleanup is because of that. Um, when we take deed of a property, we need to be quicker than a two-year turnaround. That's just two years of people living there, you know, squatting. We need to shut that process down. But tougher laws and then, you know, supporting our troopers. And, uh, anybody that knows anybody that wants to become a trooper, they really need it. And that's a big shout out to them. Okay? I want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank God. We want to thank you for all your love and blessings. Please keep your borough, our borough safe and focused on doing your will. Please help the poor, the downtrodden, the sick, the addicted, the people that are hurting. Please give our leaders the wisdom to lead, give parents the will to teach and the children's a listening heart to learn your way. May you speak to our hearts. May we love our neighbors. May we pray for our enemies. May you work in their lives. Please bring a revival to our valley. Fill our hearts with your Holy Spirit. May we love with all our hearts, love you with all our soul and all our minds. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay. Borough Manager, parting comments?
Uh, we'll prepare for the next meeting.
My parting comments again are another 17 thank yous for everybody coming. And hopefully you feel that we have made a dent tonight and that we are listening and that we are going to work with you and I have been working with you. And, uh, we will see some results to continue to make the Matsu Borough the best place to live, work and play. And the clerk wants to talk.
Sorry. I didn't want you to adjourn. So Assemblymember Yan did make a great point that the, the community councils are here right now. So if we want to schedule that October 24th meeting, is there, is the assembly object to that date? Okay.
Is that also a Tuesday?
It is a Tuesday.
6 p.m.?
6 p.m. 24th.
Okay. Alrighty. Good night, everybody. Safe travels home and we'll see you next time. Bye-bye. The meeting, the meeting will adjourn at 8:34.